Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually pursuant to the governor's executive order. Patrick, should I go ahead and do all the postponements even though you had them posted all that time?
It's fine. Nothing wrong with those suspenders.
Okay. Oh, that's it. No negative nellies tonight, okay? Seven Meadow Place LLC, which is our second application for a final coastal site plan and special permit. Dieter and Rosemary Hauser care of Thomas Monas at 1309 East Putnam, which is Valbella, has also been postponed. Greenwich Board of Education has withdrawn the application for a zoning map amendment. And then LMB Dublin Hill LLC for a final site plan and special permit at 42 Dublin. Innisarden Golf Club at 120 Tomac Avenue for a final coastal site plan and special permit. And finally Julio A. Quinday, Estudillo and Olga Quinday for a final site plan and special permit at 36 Pembroke Road has also been postponed. And the last one is, is that correct, is Innisarden Golf Club? I read them out of order. Is Innisarden Golf Club at 120 Tomac Avenue for a final site plan and special permit? In addition, this evening, Mr. Lowe will be seated the entire evening for Mr. Fox. And we will also have Ms. Goss seated part of the evening. I believe, Mr. Yesky, you are not. But I'll read that as we get to them who's seated. First item on our agenda is a discussion item for a preliminary application review, a pre-application review at 100 West Putnam Avenue. I'm sorry, that's 100 East Putnam Avenue, not West. It's listed as 100 West, but it's East.
Yeah, I believe the applicant name was Miss...
Okay, so we're good. They know where they are, right? And that is going to be for a preliminary site plan that we reviewed. I don't remember when we closed the preliminary. And so hello, Mr. Hasland.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Toth. And if you will carry on.
It was May 5th when you closed the preliminary and the position letter issued May 20th. And we've had the opportunity in the interim to go to meet with the ARC on several occasions. And most recently, they voted eight to nothing to send us back to you folks. Without further discussion with ARC, at this point at least. I assume that somewhere down the road, we'll probably, as we get further along with the project, we'll be going back to ARC maybe for some details, but that's where we are. And you have their notes, I believe, and comments. And so we thought we'd come in front of you as a discussion item under the pre-app process just before we start committing to final plans for submission to make sure that we're, the ARC and the commissioner are thinking along the same lines and that we are getting the right messages. And that we think that we've made some good changes to the look of the building, particularly to respond to your encouragement for us to try to make it look more cost-cobey. I think it's accomplishing that or getting close to accomplishing that. We know we still have some tweaking to do, for instance, on the residential entryway, which none of us are completely happy with, so we're still working on that. But that's relatively minor in the grand scheme of things. We know that, acknowledge the fact that the ARC continues, at least a couple members of the ARC continue to feel strongly about the ridge line, which in part is going to be removed. I note that in your notes, in the notes from the ARC, they say, "Is there any way to save all or some of the ridge?" And I am a little perplexed by that because actually a great part of the ridge is going to be saved. I think they missed the fact that there's kind of a double canopy up there. And we are going to be saving quite a bit of it and adding some trees up on top of the ridge as well. So to move the building at this point would be really very difficult considering the parking situation and making sure that we have adequate flow, the turnaround space, et cetera. And as I think you said, I'm sure, yesterday, as you recall, we initially had the building close to Taylor and we pushed it back against the escarpment to really try to create more of a feeling of an open space and less impact on the post road and push it away from CVS as well. So I think we're doing well. I think the ARC was pleased with the changes that we've made. Some things were a little contradictory to what you'd said in the past.
Could I just stop you for a sec? I'm a little confused. You're in a pre-app discussion here. Why is it difficult to move the building back to its original proposed location?
Well, that'd be a dramatic change, but we could take it, move it all the way back.
You haven't done plans yet. Your pre-app, what you've got is just some illustrations of what it's going to look like. You're not at a design stage or you wouldn't be doing the pre-app meeting. So moving it should not be such a terrible effort as you're describing it, should it?
Well, we actually did, we're quite far along in the plans even for preliminary. If you recall, there's not just conceptual designs.
But you changed it all. You've changed a lot since the preliminary because you went to... Right. And then you were not going to do, the idea was for you to take conceptual to ARC, come back to us with conceptual all so that you would not be locked in to plans that could not be changed. As we worked it, we were trying to do you a favor. And now you're sort of throwing it back at us, so I'm minding that? Because the idea was that this way you would be able to mutate things, let it evolve. And now you're saying, "No, we can't change it." Well, you're here for a pre-app.
Correct. I guess you're under the impression that the commission was okay with the size, the location, the height, et cetera of the building. And so it's a little concerning to think that we actually are not there yet and we have to go back to relocating the building as far along as we currently are.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hasland, technically, just technically, you are not that far along or you would not be able to do a pre-app. So you're here because we're at an early phase of where you're going and you would not be able to do a pre-app discussion. That's just the point I'm making is that you should not open by saying, "Hi, we're inflexible."
Okay, I didn't mean to say, "Hi, we're inflexible."
Okay, that's what I heard. "Hi, everything's good." And now I understood that you might want to change something and, "No, we're not flexible." And that's what I'm saying to you is that that's very surprising. Because that's not the intent of being here.
No, not at all. As I said, there was a concern by the, a couple members of the ARC in particular, that there'd be more efforts taken to protect that ridge line. And I think by making, moving the building back to where it was along Taylor Drive just to protect a portion of that ridge line, where there's other parts of the ridge line that will be maintained and additional plantings put in, I think is a radical diversion from where we've been going in the past.
Well, okay, so the real issue, I'm just going to go right to the nuts and bolts here. The real issue has always been, in my mind, the width of Taylor Drive. You weren't, we didn't like your setback from Taylor Drive originally and we had you move the building in, tuck it into the stone, the wall. I can't talk, but you know what I mean. Yeah, okay. And tuck it in because you were too close to Taylor. The underlying assumption that you had then, I believe, was that you were going to widen Taylor. Okay, we don't know yet that widening Taylor is an agreed-on solution in terms of traffic, et cetera. If you were to not widen Taylor and you were to make it a regular-sized two-lane, which nobody's answered us yet on whether we really need that for the turning radius, we could have the best of all worlds and we could have enough of a setback on Taylor and also have more of the escarpment protected. Now I can talk again. So that's the nut of it there is we haven't, is where we left it at the preliminary was that we were going to have this discussion about what optimally to do about Taylor. And that's what hasn't been decided. Oops.
I think, my recollection was, well, first of all, we can create a second turning lane on Taylor by just really encroaching on that sidewalk area by a foot or two. We're not talking about 10 feet or 12 feet. It's really a foot or two that permits that to happen.
But what we could also do is narrow Taylor down to two conventional lanes, leave it with a full sidewalk and with a nice setback for the building. That was the option B that we discussed at the end of the preliminary. That option B, we don't know how that plays out because when we suggested it to you, your answer was, "Oh, the trucks need to turn into a very wide road, the delivery trucks." And where we left it was that that was going to be decided once we knew where the turning radius needed by the trucks. I haven't been able to get an answer. I asked staff about 10 days ago if they would check with DPW if we had any answer on that yet because that's essential to all this. But the underlying assumption was this thing about Taylor is over-wide for two lanes. You would take some from the sidewalk, you would add that turning lane, you would resolve the traffic with the extra turning lane. And you would, and what you mentioned was that for the business, the commercial use, you were thinking downstairs, this would be very helpful. But the other option we raised is was going back to two-lanes, conventional two-lanes. And I remember the discussion. Oops, you moved. Oh, because we lost Victoria somehow.
I don't recall. I'm sorry.
Okay, you don't recall that discussion?
I do recall that discussion. I did not think that it was any form or fashion tied to the location of the building. I thought that was a separate discussion. And as Andy Toth and I had said, we're okay, whichever way the commission wants to go on whether there's another turning lane on Taylor or not. And we were thinking it was just going to pick up or would allow us to do more with the landscaping. We didn't, I certainly didn't have the impression that it was tied to the location of the building whatsoever.
It was a mixed bag. We began with not liking how close the building. When we first looked at it, we began with not liking how close the building was to Taylor. We said, "Wow, can you set it back further?" And then I believe it was Andy said, "That would be so great if we did that because then you could make the building kind of disappear into the escarpment." And that's where we, and that's why it moves. So it solved two issues. We thought it would make it... Okay, so that's where we left it. Yeah, you know, now I've started writing stuff down. It helps. So, okay, so that's the thing. So number one, that issue, that big question in my mind is still open. What are we going to do with Taylor Drive? Should we take it down to two conventionals? Do we actually need it to be wider for, do we need it to be the extra width for the delivery trucks or not? Because I've been looking, I'm not seeing really large, the huge delivery trucks that can't make a turning radius going in there. So I'd like to check why one little street in Kos Cob needs to be extra wide just so that somebody can get deliveries. I'm not totally sure that we wouldn't be better off with more landscaping, more setback from Taylor, a conventional width, and then protecting all the trees up in the ridge. Okay, so now that I interrupted your presentation, which ARC is so nice today, I'm sure they're much nicer to you. Go ahead.
No, I just, again, I didn't think that had anything to do with the location of the building. And I'm not sure that solves that. Even if we were to narrow Taylor Drive, you're talking by, you know, a few feet.
Well, you were only taking a few feet in my setback. You were only taking two feet in my setback. I'm trying to get all that back. I only want four feet, three, four feet. That's what I want back. I want a setback. I want landscaping and I want a sidewalk. Okay, go ahead.
On the corner there, which is, I think if you, if you continue down to look at, and I'm not really sure of your pagination, but if you start to scroll down and look at the landscaping features.
Pat, can you put that up? It's page 34 on the, I know he probably, 34 on the full agenda would be the landscaping. 34, 35 shows the corner.
Yeah, we have details of all four corners.
Okay, so page 35 on the full agenda, Pat.
So there's one that shows the four quadrants that our landscape architect put together.
I've got it on separate pages. Chip, maybe, Mr. Hasland, I think.
Yeah. I have it at 18 of 39 on my screen, but I don't know if that corresponds with yours. Yep, there we go. So as you can see, you have an existing canopy that's going to remain to the northwest of the building. And also on the southwest corner. And then the other planting areas that are proposed by the landscape architect. And then if you can see, it's split into quadrants. And if you take it down to the next page, you can see, this is, for instance, the southwest corner of what's proposed, showing, I think it's 82 East Putnam Avenue up on the ridge, which is the condominium complex. And where we had proposed with the neighbor, putting two trees to fill that gap that would be formed by cutting into the cliff. But again, you have this canopy that still remains and comes over on the northwest. And then if you continue to scroll down, you see the proposal for the corner of Taylor and East Putnam Avenue, which is really quite significant when it comes to the trees they're putting in plus the plantings. We moved the building back, if you remember, to accommodate some of these and to create more walkability and a feeling of community. And I think that landscape architect Jeff did a good job of relating that corner to the rest of the streetscape, but adding those significant natural features. Again, if you keep going down, there's an illustration of a corner with a tree, with the tree on it, which is the bank corner. And if you keep on going down after that, this is the northeast corner of the property where it abuts the Taylor Drive residential community. And we have provided for plantings there, including significant arborvitaries along the common property boundary. One more down, Pat. Yeah, so that area to your right where it shows a path, that's the Green Giants, which you can see in your bottom right, which we planted along that area as well as planting bed in the corner there as well. And then if you go down one more page, you again see that significant canopy that will remain up on top of the ridge and plantings in the northwest corner again. It is tight on the western side, but Jeff, it's closer to seven feet than six feet, but Jeff has indicated that the plants that he has picked for this area will thrive there. And with seven feet, we shouldn't have any problem getting access in there to maintain them. Again, pushing the building away from that section would impact the parking and the flow, the turnaround areas, et cetera. I'm told by our architect, Eric, that it would be a nightmare for him to have to try to reconfigure that along with Charlie Mills. So that was our thinking of keeping the building where it is, doing what we have done with the landscaping.
Sorry, why is it such a nightmare? That was your very first design to us was in the location that we're now discussing. Why is it such a terrible nightmare if that was your first proposal to us?
Well, the original was that it was going to, the building was going to be on the corner of East Putnam and Taylor and the parking would be, you drove through the building basically, as I recall it. It's been a while now. I've seen many different...
That one is some fuzzy around. I remember the last meeting more clearly. I didn't take good notes at the first one, but I thought that, I didn't, I thought you weren't, the pushback into the escarpment was not necessary to you at the time when you first proposed it. I very distinctly remember Andy suggesting it.
That's true. That's true. And actually, I think it came up initially too in the workshop before we even met with you. "Why are you putting it all on Taylor?" So we actually had two concepts. One was we either keep it on Taylor or we push it back. And then when we met with you initially, I believe Mr. Fox was pumped, felt quite strongly about that, that we should be using that natural escarpment to cut the building back and kind of hide it, at least when you're driving down the east. And that made a lot of sense. And so that's kind of where we've been progressing to. And all the plans pretty much since that first meeting have been with that in mind, is trying to keep it back close to that escarpment while dealing with all the parking, et cetera.
Mr. Leroy, can you go to page 39 of the agenda? Mr. Hasland, you had just mentioned actually maintaining that landscaping area up on the ridge and in the back.
Some of it.
I have a question about how somebody gets up to that elevation to maintain it. On page 39, it shows, actually, this is the lighting plan, but it actually shows all of the retaining walls, et cetera, that actually hold the ridge back. And I don't see any really good access because it seems that both, both the southwest corner is where the stair is. That's the upper left-hand corner of this drawing. And then in the northeast corner, or yeah, the lower right corner, you know, there's a retaining wall there to, for those parking spaces. So yeah, it'd be great to have something that's maintained in there, but how do we get up there to maintain them if it's, is it just a guy going up with a pair of clippers? Or, you know, I'm kind of confused and I think that's one of those issues. If it's landscaping as proposed, I think the maintenance for that area is actually a critical concern and that that really needs to be taken into account for.
Well, and that's an excellent point, Mr. McRae, because one of the things that Marissa was briefing us on and that also, since you were the person who was on the Green, who the P&amp;Z member for the Greenscape Task Force, what came up in the Greenscape Task Force is that when you have these native plantings that have survived in little rocky places like that, they're natural survivors. And that is, that's why the guiding principles of the greenscape that you developed said to protect those. Because when you replace it with landscaping that's managed and that is put into place, they are, it could be a lot less likely to survive. That's how I remember that discussion, that we're better off leaving things in their natural state. Is that correct, Nick?
Yeah, it's that Mother Nature take over. You know, the plants will find a way to take hold and survive in that area as opposed to providing some kind of a managed landscape area that would need constant attention and watering and that kind of thing. In a sense, actually, let the weeds take over because at a certain time, you know, the weed trees will grow to maturity and, you know, the ground cover will be there. You may have to go back and maybe, you know, mow it if it's becoming a problem. But at the same time, if Mother Nature takes over, she'll find a way to get it to grow.
Okay, so do you want to move on from that, Mr. Hasland, and show us the rest of it? Since we like cut you off after, or I, I'm sorry, I cut you off after a minute, you know, 30 seconds into what you were saying. I'm very sorry. It was just, wait, what? What do you mean? We can't change this. Why is he here? Go ahead.
So no, I just, I thought we wanted to show you too how the architectural plans had developed as well, which I think if you go down, Pat...
You want to put that up?
The first view on, I think it's like the fourth slide.
Yeah.
On East Putnam.
And then, yeah, after you do that, and I want to ask you, so yeah, it's on page 21 of the full agenda. I think that's the first one. Oh, 20 is the first one actually that shows the CVS building.
And there are elements in that too, you can see from the material design when we get further along, that we picked up from the Fjord Fishery Building from Griffith Harris. We tried to pick up more on the wood, the white signs, the delineating, the particular stores rather than one string. I think we're getting kind of competing feelings about what we do. We got rid of the parapet at your request. There's a note from ARC.
No, I never asked for the parapet, just so you know.
Right, no, I said we got rid of it.
Mr. Levy was, yeah, right.
We got rid of it. ARC says, "Consider adding white band corners or other architectural elements at the top of the second floor, not necessarily adding the parapet." So we have some gray area there.
I think we're okay. I think that the commission is trying very hard to leave building design in as much as possible to ARC with guidance from us about what we're looking for. I think that has worked fairly well. So we'll try really hard to stay with that. Obviously, you have all these opinions in front of you, but, and some of them are very well-informed and very, you know, they know their stuff, obviously, but even, but I think we're going to try to stay with ARC. So ARC was very pleased with this. They just wanted to add more white, you said?
Well, there's a comment about, "Consider adding a white band corners or other architectural elements at the top of the second floor." So I mean, you can see there's just some delineation, but we can get into the, further into that. And there's also a recommendation that we consider putting, "Roof scape needs a lower ridge applied to the building parallel with Putnam Avenue." I don't remember that specifically being stated, but it's in the notes. "With a drop ridge and dormers," I do remember that. And I think Andy feels, has some feelings about putting dormers in this roof line. He's not keen on it and I'd let him chime in if he wishes to. But generally, I think we just want to get a feeling from you. I think ARC was happy with where we've gotten to. If you remember our original design, which was very kind of industrial-looking, you felt, I think. And this, I think, really picks up a lot of that Kos Cob, those Kos Cob features that I think you were looking for. We've delineated the DBTL space as well. I think the corner works well where the bank is and the window, the bay window shown there. And if you keep going down, you look at the eastern elevation. If you scroll down to rendered east elevation with landscaping, yeah, there you go. The way we've broken up the portions of the building so you get different feelings of relationship of the building to Taylor Drive and a sense that it's just one big mass.
Mr. Hasland, could I ask you, I think it made help, you're, and my, I'm hearing you freeze. I'm having you freeze. Is anybody else having trouble hearing Mr. Hasland or is it just me?
Yeah, he freezes up every once in a while, but it's not a big issue.
Okay, all right.
Getting just portions of the comments.
Okay, so we'll wave at you when you're frozen because you're freezing every now and then. You just freeze. Okay, so go ahead. The side of the building and what you've done with it.
I think just breaking it up a bit so that you get a feeling that that has different relationships to Taylor Drive and the surface and it isn't one, just one big uniform mass. The roof lines obviously changed, the ARC commented on the fact that we've done a good job with that. And they did say, basically, they liked the fact that they're changing so there's different delineations. But more of it would be welcome by them as well, which we can continue to look at. I think it's much more successful than what we were showing you initially as far as breaking it up.
Excuse me, Mr. Hasland. When we're looking at this rendered east elevation, the lighter colored sections, there are two of them, like the second and the fifth, are those somewhat recessed? What is the presentation here trying to communicate?
Yeah, we're not, it's not different colored brick. So it's just the coloring is made or changed so you get the feeling of the recessions to the building in various places.
But that's what I was asking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's all the same brick, however. And again, you can see that the bank corner, which I think is more successful than it was initially and is softer, it has its own kind of personality. I'm not an architect, so I really can't speak the language as well as other people can.
That's okay. English is perfectly acceptable here.
Well, I think the design speaks for itself in a lot of ways too, if you look at it from where we came. And also, of course, you can see the ridge line in the back that has the trees still existing. So our landscape architect had a part in laying this particular elevation out so that you can see the relation of the ridge behind as well, at least to the north. I think that... Go ahead.
So where did we come down on the front view between the second, you know, above the second level windows in terms of that corner? So you're going to put it there or what was the decision?
Well, as I said, we're kind of a bit twitched in between. I think there was a feeling from you folks that you did not want us to have at least a parapet. And again, from the ARC, they're saying, "Could we consider adding something?" We're not necessarily married to that railing either. That could be a change as well. But yeah, we could put a feature across the top there, even if it's just a white band.
I was just trying to, I was seeking clarification as to what had, what had been sort of, what's the latest proposal for that?
Yeah, that's, so the recommendation was to, the ARC is that we consider putting something back in. And we had told them that you, for the most part, were not keen on a parapet. So that's why we had, that had disappeared. But we can put a feature in there if everybody's on the same page. Something should be there.
Just want to get it. I just keep wanting to leave it to ARC unless somebody here has very strong feelings. I'd like to, you have only one set of designers. And I think you guys have done a really, generally, it is so much better than the beginning. I know it's been frustrating for the developer, but I think it's going to work a whole lot better in the community. Does anybody else have comments on this?
I have a comment.
Wait a second.
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay, first Victoria and then is that Mr. Toth? I believe it was.
I just want to say thank you so much, Mr. Toth, and to Mr. Hasland because you're working with the commission and I know it's difficult, but the difference from this at the beginning... at the beginning to now is nothing short of amazing, and it's just, it will fit in so well with Cos Cob, and it just, it's just terrific to, 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 that we can work together like this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Toth.
Mr. Ms. Allen, before Mr. Toth goes, I do have thoughts and a comments, please. Mr. Leroy, actually, actually, this, this is, this is, we can start here on this, this elevation. I know Mr. Hasland, that we had talked about this tower piece thing on the right-hand side of this drawing. Now that we have this gable end that actually faces east. Mr. Leroy, if you can go to the next slide. Yeah, there it is. I think what it, it seems to me that it's actually now covering up that gable end, which I, I think would actually be better served to see the gable end as opposed to the tower piece, because I think it's actually creating a, an element that's, you know, kind of covering up a better architectural character. Mr. Leroy, I'll run this, actually, there was, question is actually breaking up this elevation in the back here. What's interesting is that I, to me, now it actually seems more broken than it should be. I think the, the shed dormers above the windows in the third section there are, it's a little jarring because you have little slices of roof that come down below it. It's almost as if you want to actually carry the eve line of that, that shed roof across and eliminate those, eliminate those slices of roof that come down. You know, to give it some, some continuity, you do, you possibly could do that and actually still have the shed roof and then the parapets, those kinds of things. The lobby drawing. I think it's the next, keep one more, yeah, that's it. I think actually, this is as a critical issue. This is one of those things where you're creating or solving that, where's the front inches to the apartments? This particular thing, I think, actually, giving this enough openness and air to it, so actually, when people see this, it's well lit at night. You really understand, this is the front door. It looks like, yes, your door is to the left-hand side of that, as opposed to your center line, so you can see it. But making sure that it's well lit and it is a real specific, you know, pedestrian entry. Mr. Leroy, go to the next slide. So you really, you really have done something good here. I think actually, even, even canopy lighting underneath, it really kind of give that whole thing a good glow to it. Because I think that would actually now go back to what we had talked about, and where is the front door? And this thing will definitely say, yes, here's the front door itself. In one of, one of the actual drawings, there were two different types of gable ends on the lower retail. One seemed to go to a ridge or a peak ridge. On the gable end, one seemed to be truncated. I'm not too sure if that's a district drafting area, but you should choose one to the other. Now, the let's go to actually, if I can find the right drawing, Mr. Leroy. Bear with me. Ah, yes, Mr. Leroy, it's, I think it's slide twenty-six, let me see if I can find it in the agenda. Bear with me. On the agenda, so I think it's page forty-one.
What's, what's, what's in it, Nick?
This is a signage, proposed signage locations. Page forty-one of the agenda, page twenty-six of the presentation. Yeah, one more, one, go up one. That's it. So, Mr. Hasland, I guess on this drawing, we're seeing where there are red light, red marks or red indicators of signage.
Right.
It's, to me, and this is my opinion, it's overkill. I've got signs all over the place. I've got a ground sign proposed, all of those things. It's the bank, people will know it's the bank, and I think what it's, what we find is that you've have, you've established the sign program for the building. And now you're going to go in with this overkill of actually having so many signs to really detract from the time and effort you put into the, getting the architecture straightened out. And again, it's that corner piece that actually, if you kind of soften that up or bury it into the, the thing, may give you opportunities for better signage on the corner rather than the monument sign. I believe that the monument sign is just, Leroy, if you can go to the next.
I think we were pretty clear that we were not enthusiastic about that monument sign every time, and they've discussed it.
Right, you've got, you can really see, you know, on the signage program, these large empty green, that kind of thing. You know, there's lots of them on the building. So I think the monument side is probably something that's really not needed whatsoever. And I think it would actually just clutter up your landscaping in your front yard. And really detract from the architecture of the, and the cost cobbiness, to use the word, of the building. So, now, with the, that parapet, I noticed that you've actually have corbling at the, at the railing. Actually, Mr. Leroy, if you can go to page seventeen of the slides. Yeah, that's it. That's a great, that's, that's a great rendering, really kind of giving a sense of what's happening on the corner. And I think you really can see it, that, that gable end that's on the corner is really being now hidden by that, that tower piece that we were looking for. I think if we're talking about cost cobbiness, maybe that tower piece, you know, is eliminated. You actually use the, the bow windows, you know, on the facade itself. But it really exposed that gable end to give it more of the cost cobbie feel. And then you can see how, how everything is kind of broken up there behind it on the east facade. You can see where this, the, those little slices of roof come down and how things are maybe a little bit too broken. So, Mr. Leroy, if you can go to the slide up above, six, page sixteen. And I think actually, right here, you can see in that section elevation, you can see actually where the, the corbling is. Maybe if it's, if it's not a white band, maybe the corbling could be more detailed or heavier, just to give that a pronounced edge. I really think that actually the, that railing may disappear as much as possible into that, you know, with the grayness or even red or something, but I think with the materials, this is kind of a new architectural element for Costco, but maybe just the corbling will help give it a more definition to it. Because I think actually, the, the brick materials, the window types, the gutters, all of these are, are more residential in feel and goes a long way to help the building. Mr. Leroy, if you can go up one more slide to fifteen.
Before you leave that one, Mr. McRae, can I just ask you, the commission's feeling about the suggestion they're putting dormers up on that roof?
In my opinion, Mr. Mr. Hasland, in my opinion, it, it wouldn't add anything to this elevation whatsoever. I, I think actually, dormers here would look, lack of a better way to say, kitschy.
Yeah, that's what we felt too.
It's something that, you know, if the, if the, if the balcony was not there and that facade continued up to the eve line, it might be warranted, but I don't believe it'll actually add anything to this.
I, I, I understand why they want to do it. Okay, but I'm a little concerned here. We're going down the design route, Nick, and I, I thought we had.
Let's see, these are just my opinions of what I've, what I'm seeing here.
But what I just, I'm, I'm trying to be careful, I'm just trying to be careful not to contradict A R C and not to cover the same areas that they're going to cover.
Well, I don't know what they covered, and I'm.
Okay, but I'm just.
Giving my opinion on this, so.
Okay, but I'm just concerned because then what happens is the developer goes to A R C and says, well, the planning and zoning commission told us to not to do the dormers and not to do the blah, 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 and now we're confused. So what I want to do is for.
I think then to clarify that, Mr. Hasland, these are my opinions on the presentation that you're giving tonight.
Great, thank you.
These are suggestions that I'm giving to the design team of things that I see that might be beneficial. Okay, this is not the opinion of the commission itself, it's only my opinion of what I'm seeing here.
Okay, so in other words, if A R C really wants a certain thing, we're trying to work in a way that isn't making the developer feel like a ping pong ball.
No, I don't want to make that, yes, I don't want him to have that feeling.
No ping pong. I'm sure Andy Toth does not want to be treated like a ping pong ball, so I'm trying to keep it where he's getting one set of guidance on design. Now, where the building is located, how the parking and the circulation and how the street, all that. And the issue of the tree line, I felt we needed to weigh in on because basically, I'm, I think that where we're coming out is that P O S, the first task force we did to implement the P O C D supports exactly what A R C has said to you. You guys met with that task force when you were designing this, so you know that it, there's a lot of passion and commitment to it. And to keeping the native plantings as they were. So Nick, I, I don't know, maybe, I think Nick, what might be helpful would be so that you can get all your input in is maybe share it somehow, do you, can you share, Pat, Katie, help us out with this? Maybe just pass on Nick's input to A R C somehow in a way that it can inform their thinking without feeling like the planning and zoning commission is contradicting them. Does that help?
Yeah. Nick saying anything that the A R C hasn't said? I, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm just trying to look at their, their notes, and I'm hearing what Nick's saying, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if I know where they.
The white, the adding the white, the Sydney. So the white, the banding, thank you. Well, go ahead, Katie.
I was gonna say, the main goal this evening was just for the applicant to get the direction from you that, yeah, this is the right direction.
Right direction.
Any specifics, and then.
Right direction.
Yeah, and the A R C is advisory to you, can do their thing, and, you know, obviously, the applicant heard what Nick said, so I think just as long as you think this is, you know, it's not the modern anymore and what have you, so I think that mission accomplished.
Mission accomplished, right direction.
I just wanted to make a comment that I would echo what Nick says. And I do have a, a question or two. Just really a point of information, that those northern retaining walls in the in the parking area. Mr. Hasland, are they, how are they going to be treated? What is it going to look like? Because they're not really detailed, so I was just curious if there was any intent there to grow vines on it, or. No, wait, one, one second.
Okay, goodbye. Okay, Mr. Toth, I'm sorry, we cut you off?
No, I was, yes.
Mr. Toth?
I'm ready whenever you're.
Okay, please go ahead. Peter started, as Peter Levy started to speak, and you were, you were the next up, so if you wouldn't mind going ahead.
So, first of all, I feel like an Olympic ping pong table.
Okay, but we're really making an effort here not to make you, and I want to remind you, before you say that, no, Mr. Toth, before you say that, I gave you input the very first time you presented this design. The very first time you came before us, we said to you that we did not like it when it was the modern. And it stayed that way until we finally repeated ourselves so many times that you evolved it. I know you now feel like a ping pong ball, and I'm sorry for that, but I feel very strongly that you guys were also not receptive to us originally. We are incredibly grateful that you became receptive, and we love what you've done. Okay, now go ahead and tell me how you feel like an Olympic ping pong ball.
Because it has nothing to do with the architecture.
Okay, good, all right, go ahead, you can yell at me.
Let's go back to our original workshop and our formal workshop with P and Z and staff. Okay, we did have the building along Taylor Road. We also had the retail along Taylor Road. And the main entrance to come into the building, you would have to go underneath the building and then into the parking lot. So it wasn't really a warm, inviting, the building that was going to be the entree to Cos Cob. So with, with good work with Katie and her staff and our staff, Katie said, you know what, this is all about neighborhood shopping, the retail should be along Putnam Avenue. We agree, okay? It shouldn't come in where you, you're standing fifteen feet away, just like nobody wants the CVS building, standing in your face with no landscaping and looking up forty-five degrees into the moon. We agree. We moved the building to a location that it has been there for several, several meetings. There's only been one person that asked to move the building, and his name is John Conte, okay? That was the only person. In none of our P and C meetings, we asked to move.
If you, if you take, if you take a look, Mr. Toth, if you take a look, we originally asked you to move it to the west.
Your notes are right here in front of me, just like Mr. Hasland said. So if you let me proceed, I'd like to make my presentation to you all. So, in, in, Mr. McRae was the first commissioner to bring up about the hill and its greenery. So we went, as per the commission, to hire a licensed professional, twenty-year-plus arborist. And she did her site inspection, okay? And she found it, and I gave this to everybody, but nobody reads it into the thing that
Oh, we read it.
With respect to the western existing trees, we engaged a licensed arborist as requested by the commission. In Arborist Matthews' report, the assessed tree having six inches diameter and greater, per findings of the fifty trees assessed, thirty-one trees were in poor condition and eighteen were in fair condition. Okay, the majority of the trees are on a steep slope on the western side of the property that has been historically disturbed for development. The invasive Norway maple trees dominate this slope. Due to the lack of maintenance, many of the trees are supersed by the mature trees. English ivy vines are dense at the base of most trees, and in some cases, the vines extend to the length of the tree trunks and are in the tree canopy, further suppressing the trees. Some of these trees show signs of basal and/or trunk decay. As such, twenty trees, seven trees should be removed, and ten trees need immediate removal because of their high risk. Now we're talking about saving something that's overgrown with vines and brush and this and that, so. And the one thing that really dumbfounded me at the A R C meeting, I've been up on that hillside over a dozen times. I've walked the property with Mr. DeVito, who owns those condominiums, and the gentleman who owns the condominiums on the other side, both of those are in an L B R two zone that can have further development. He is in agreement that these trees are overgrown, inundated with ivy, and prohibit his light and air for his property and his building. He is in great favor of removing those trees and providing adequate and necessary screening that would be conducive for his property, his building, our property and our building. He also is in, in agreement to put in two large maple trees that will replace some of the canopy. Now, when I asked any of the A R C members, have they ever been up there, I got a blank stare, so that means nobody has been.
I believe that.
Okay, so when I said to them, I said, there is a second canopy. If you look at slides number ten, where we have our plan, okay, with the landscaping, and, and the slide twenty-two, which is the aerial, you can see the second additional canopy, which is higher than the slanted canopy. Okay, so we, we're, we're making it that we're taking the entire canopy away and that we're removing all this beautiful greenscape and whatnot. We can plant on that hill that will be remaining, leave the additional canopies, and I think Matt, Mr. McRae made a very good point. Why don't we just let it grow naturally with once in a while pruning or whatever, so it doesn't look like it's a mess? So I think our landscape architect has addressed that in a very fashionable way. So, in, in what I'm getting at is, I'm strongly, strongly against, at this point, moving the building. And I don't see any need. And getting back to our meetings with, with, with Katie, and, and before we came in, we, we went over this as this was a viable location for this particular site, for this particular building.
I, when I discussed this with staff, my understanding was that at the A R C meeting, it was made clear to you that both Mr. Conti and Mr. Hein had walked this site. You would have to check with Marissa, but that's what I remember her. You would have to check with Marissa, but that's what I remember her telling me. Now, Mr. Toth, you know that just sort of to be clear, the underlying issue for me is a little bit less about the escarpment and more about the fact that I'm not really enthusiastic about the, the three, the turning lane on Taylor. And because I think it intensifies the traffic on Taylor. That being said, because you know, the, the basic law of traffic management is if you build it, they will come. So we're going to intensify the traffic on Taylor. And the one objection we had from residents was that they didn't want it to be intensive traffic where it was hard to be pedestrians. That's what we heard from the neighbors initially. So on that. Now, on the escarpment, from what I understood again from Marissa, Mr. Conti was quite clear that some of that vegetation was as you described, but that he believed that maintaining the native species as they were was important. And as you know, he's a landscape architect. And he, he was aware of the study that you'd done, I expect, but I, Marissa was, did say he had walked it, I'm, I don't quite remember if Mr. Hein had as well, but I do remember, and I believe she said he had walked it three times. Because I checked in with her.
And the other thing is, is that you know, 60% of the trees of a licensed arborist is telling us to remove them. 60% of the trees of six inches of width. There's a ton of weed trees there that are not even trees or indigenous to this native area. It, 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 it's just, it, it, it's pointless. I, 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 I'm so dumbfounded by it, I, I can't tell you.
I would have to, I would have to agree with Mr. Toth a bit here, because I, I've been up there and I walked the area and I, I do not see many indigenous species there. I see species that are not indigenous. So I'm a little confused by all the, the idea that we should preserve the indigenous species up there. There, and the, the majority of the trees are these Norway maples, which are weeds and are not indigenous. Now, when Norway maples become mature, they have some value, I think. But until then, they are weeds.
Could I, I, I think that the best solution, Katie, is there any way that we could impose on, on Mr. Kramer to walk this for us?
Oh, sure.
Okay, that's what we're going to do then, Mr. Toth. We're going to have our own tree guy do it. We're going to have him look at it and he can advise us and we'll settle it that way, okay? Rather than get a whole bunch of amateur tree specialists. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Toth, I don't mean that yours was an amateur, but we are. Rather than us opine on it, we'll have Mr. Kramer, who has a PhD in botany, he should be able to answer the question to your satisfaction, we'll have him look at it. And have him advise us and we will follow his advice, how about that?
Well, I'm not so sure that that's a great thing, because, you know, I've been to almost a full year and when we started the original application with P and Z, the building has been where it's located right now. So what I like to know is, are you going to make me move the building? Because then I have to go a different route. And, you know, I don't want to move the building, I think it's in the proper location for this site based on this development. And if you did go to slide 17, like Mr. McGray says, which is kind of the character of where the building is, I think it looks great. And I understand what you're saying about the architecture, maybe it took us a little bit of time. However, the reason why I asked.
Thank you, Mr. Toth, that's, that's kind of.
Was, so yes, the ping pong effect. If they wanted the parapet, you didn't want the parapet, I was just trying to get.
I don't want to do that to you. I do not want to do that.
Hear me out, I did not know placement of the building was even going to be an item of discussion. I thought that was already finalized. What I wanted to do was take the 10 elements of the notes of motion from A R C, discuss it with you, so that I can come back in for final with some continuity, cohesiveness between commission and committee, so that I can bring a plan in that addresses your things and those things, but I had no idea we were readdressing.
Well, we had to, because the moment, well, let's, let's replay that. So the moment A R C talks to you about saving that tree line, we have to ask you about moving the building, because it's the only way to save the tree line. So that's the logical connection. I saw the notes and I said, well, the only way they can save the tree is by, by, by moving the building back. That's what A R C is asking them for, and that's why we're having this discussion. Because that of all the topics A R C raised with you is the only one that we thought we should talk about. Now, the rest of the topics, the rest of the topics A R C raised with you, we're trying really hard to let them be and do their, their architect-y thing.
And so why did I get a vote of eight to zero to come back to planning and zoning for final approval? If they were going to say, hey, we're not going to vote, we're not going to send you back to final, because we don't want the building there.
Okay, wait, wait, so.
You saw John when he voted, yeah, he was like, alright, I guess, yes, I'm in. So that means, yes, he's in with where the building is located. We got a vote of eight to zero. What is a vote of eight to zero mean if, if, if? That means to me, yes, we, we approved your landscaping, we approved your landscape lighting, we approved some of the architecture with these 10 items that we have to finalize, and please go back to planning and zoning and do a final. Now you're telling me that eight to zero means nothing?
No, I'm not telling you it means nothing, I'm telling you that from what I understand from staff, that there was a significant discussion and that there was some hesitation as regards saving this and how to save that, more of that.
If there was hesitation, they wouldn't have voted eight to zero and closed the application.
As I remember, as I remember, Mr. Toth, that's still in what they send in our notes. I don't have them in front of me right now, but I certainly spent time over the weekend and there's a fairly strong statement in there. And so that's why, that's what they raised and the only way we could address it.
It's eight words, is there any way to save all or some of the ridge? That was, that's the whole thing. Number one D.
So I'm being asked that, correct?
We are saving a big portion of the ridge, yes, we are.
Okay, so.
Highlighting our landscaping plan, it's highlighted in our aerial, yes, we are saving a big portion of the ridge.
They asked us the question and the only way that I see that that question can be answered is by raising the location of the building. I'm, I mean, this is the only logical consequence of having that question be in their, in their notes. Is to ask you about the location of the building, because that's the only way you save it. You're saved more of it.
So how, how and when do I find out about the location of the building? Where do I go from here?
I just told you, Mr. Toth, we're going to talk to Mr. Kramer. And Mr. Kramer is going to review that, that vegetation and we're going to have an opinion from him. And we'll ask him to do it as soon as he can and staff will advise you.
And he's going to be provided with the aerial and our landscaping plan and he's going to see all the canopy that we are leaving, right? You're going to give him all that information, correct?
Yes, and you know what else, he's a really smart guy.
So is our arborist, she's a great lady, 25 years of experience.
So maybe they'll completely agree and we'll be done with it. But we're going to ask Mr. Kramer, that's going to be our Solomonic answer here, we're good at those right now.
Chairman, maybe I suggest actually, Mr. Toth, maybe, maybe your arborist can meet with the town tree warden at the site and they can walk it together and discuss this issue. Because I think that rather than have him, you know, walk it and then issue a report, so they, they can hear it right through the horse's mouth, we can get this resolved in terms of what's actually up there. Any of it's worth saving? Or your plan or your design actually may resolve the issues. Does that sound like a better idea?
I think.
Get both of them to work it?
Yes, that's fair, that's very fair. And, and hopefully sooner rather than later.
We'll do it as fast as Mr. Kramer can be available, he's terrific and I'm, he'll do what he can to be responsive, because we're in this situation.
Okay, thank you.
But again, Mr. Toth, the question from them was try to save the ridge, so here we are, trying to save the ridge. So they may have voted eight to nothing, but they asked us to try to save it, so that's what we're doing. Okay, anything else, Mr. Haslam or Mr. Toth?
They all or some.
Right. So, Mr. Toth?
I don't, I don't think there's a great clamor in the Cosco community to save that ridge. If you recall, we had a meeting back in February with the community at the Cosco Library, discussed our plans when the building was at its current location. As I think it's been stated, there's a lot of weeds up there and while some people may be in favor of having natural growth, take over a commercial zone.
We've solved it, okay, we've got a solution to it, I don't think we need to retread over it. We're going to have Mr. Kramer, I'm a little, Katie, are you okay with having Kramer walk with Mr. Toth's arborist, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so it's a solution, Nick's idea is good, we're going to have them walk it together, everybody's going to look at all the material. Happy campers, we'll resolve it.
And we can have a P and Z staff person go with them also.
That would, I would like that, I would like Marissa to be there if that could be possible.
Yep.
Because Marissa knows what, exactly what A R C said. And.
Additionally, I can ask Mr. DeVito if we can walk up on top of his property as well.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Is there anything else you want to add?
Is anybody interested in commenting on that the northern wall face and how that is going to be treated?
Oh, the retaining wall, I'm sorry, Mr. Levy, I don't know at this point. Andy, do you know how that was going to be treated? Have we gotten there yet?
Yeah. Yes, all the walls that are going to be exposed are going to have some sort of vine drip, not dripping, but draping over them to hide the walls that, that are higher, which are the north walls, Mr. Levy. Yes, we are going to provide some sort of landscaping to soften the, the, you know, the cement of those walls.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, we've got our marching orders.
Got your marching orders, we're going to stay, staff is going to stay connected with you and hopefully we, again, I think everybody loves the design.
Good, thank you, that's good to hear. That's good to hear.
And we thank you for the effort and we really are trying to be even-handed, even though it doesn't seem like. Okay?
Okay, thank you for your time again tonight, appreciate it.
Bye.
Bye.
Our next. Our next item, and we then have two postponements on the agenda after this discussion item. I'm very sorry about the dogs, there are people in my yard. The next item is Greenwich Board of Education for a municipal improvement for Greenwich High School at 10 Hillside Road. And Mr. Lowe will be seated for Mr. Fox on this application. Did you remember, should we open the public hearing at the same time and go to the site plan?
Probably a good idea, just to do everything on.
Alright, so we hereby open the public hearing and with that, with the opening of the public hearing, we go to the Greenwich Board of Ed for a final site plan and special permit for Greenwich High School at 10 Hillside Road. And Mr. Lowe will be seated for Mr. Fox.
You're muted.
Mr. Hegney, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. And we were before you earlier this month and you requested that we go to the Board of Appeals for a variance of floor area. And we did that at their July 22 meeting, which they granted. We also appeared again in front of the Architecture Review Committee, which approved the plan except for the kiosk, which still is up in the airs to the the design, the final design for it. I would add that the, the prior figure we had for the floor area was slightly higher because the dimensions were taken from the exterior of the walls rather than the interior of the walls. So we're actually several hundred square feet less than what we originally had brought to you and to the Board of Appeals. At this stage, I think we've gone over pretty much everything else, I don't want to repeat all the questions we've had at the earlier meetings. What I would ask though, is as part of your considering this application, is to approve Phase 1A, which is the team rooms, the bathrooms, the bleachers and the elevator tower and press box. And then continue the application for 1B, which is for the parking, driveway and site work. What, what this will enable us to do, because this is obviously a public project, we need to have the M I approval for the bleachers to be able to order the bleachers. The company is ready to proceed with fabrication and delivery, but we can't enter into a contract with them unless you, of course, approve a municipal improvement for that. While that is going on, we will then be able to have our engineers, Fuston O'Neill, meet with Mr. Marucci in engineering, resolve the issues of drainage, which made us bifurcate this in 1A and 1B. So if we could have approval of 1A, assuming you're prepared to do that this evening, and defer Phase 1B, so that we can bring that back to you after we've met with Mr. Marucci.
Mr. Hegney.
Scheduled for tomorrow.
Mr. Hegney, I, I don't, if I may say, I, I understand what you're trying to accomplish and I don't think that what you're proposing is the right way to do it. I think what you could do instead is just come in with a new M I and site plan for, for 1B, could work with you on getting the timing done in the same way. Only problem is if someone wants to take an appeal on Phase 1A, it's going to complicate things because we'll have the same application number that we would for 1B. So I think if you just submit them separately.
All right, I, I.
I guess.
I'm looking for a way to be able to move this forward.
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll, we'll work with you to maintain the same schedule. If you did it the other way, it would just have separate application numbers.
That, that, that will certainly work.
Okay.
I, I do want to say, we, we appreciate all the efforts of the folks in the neighborhood. The Board of Education members have reached out to them, there's been a very positive dialogue, which will continue. Joe Kelly, who is the, the board liaison, has met with the neighbors and will continue to do that. And we're looking forward to resolving any other issues that, that they have from previous applications. So with that, I would ask for your approval for Phase 1A of the stadium project.
Tell, tell me again, Katie, how you want to do this, I, I didn't.
So what, what I, if you want to move forward, you should move forward with a modified municipal improvement that is coincident with Phase 1A site plan. Meaning just bleachers in the road and then the applicant can come with a new municipal improvement and site plan for 1B, which would be the other, you know, the continuing on.
Okay.
And so on and so forth until the, everything that was in the initial M I is completed. But that way, we just, we, we just keep things separate and we, and if there is an appeal, it's not going to muddy what's going on with what you might potentially do with 1B.
Okay. Mr. Hegney, just on the site plan, I, if, Patrick, could you put up where it shows the handicap parking? I, I would like to address, just for the record. We got an email, part of the emails we got, I, I'm assuming they all made it into the record. Because this one came in this afternoon, Katie. And they asked us about the handicap parking that somebody was saying that the handicap parking was still too far. So I just would like you to address and that we're not respecting the American Disability, Americans with Disabilities Act. So if you would just comment on that for the record, where it is.
You can show slide six.
I think I was going to say it's further in, yeah. Okay.
There, that's, that's the one. So on the lower side of the page, the lower, the bottom part of the page. Yep, that one. We show the handicap parking spaces. This is part of Phase 1B, which, as Katie has suggested, we will submit so that we can get that in front of you at the, one of the September meetings. And it has both access to the new handicap ramps that are going to be part of the bleachers themselves, which don't exist right now, and access to the elevator, which is a part of the press box. We obviously can't put the handicap parking in the field itself. And there is a rock knoll, which we spent a good deal of time talking about as part of the landscape plan with the ARC between where the bleachers are and where this parking is. And this is the closest place we could put, put the parking. And the number of parking spaces that are needed in order to provide for the required ADA parking for the stands.
Thank you very much. And so in short, since 1B will follow very closely 1A, this will be done basically at about the same time.
That, that is very much our goal. That's why it's important to receive the MI for the bleachers now so that we can order them, start the demolition process for the existing bleachers. And I don't anticipate it's gonna take us more than a month to work out the drainage with Mr. Marucci, so that by the time the site work actually starts, Phase 1B will have been before you and hopefully approved, so that we'll have one site contractor handling both phases.
Okeydoke. Thank you very much for putting that on the record. Mr. Hegney, does anybody else on the commission have any questions or comments on these applications? Katie, since one's a regular meeting and the other one is a public hearing, should we just take them both to the end of the night?
That's fine. You can definitely do that.
Okay, so Mr. Hegney, we will, we will then close both at this time. And we can amend the MI afterwards, Pat? Somebody? The amendment to the MI can be made post-closing it when we decide it.
I'm just confused by amendment. You mean the, the, just the motion?
That it's only, that it's only 1A.
Got it, understood. Great.
Yeah. Okay.
Not that I'm looking to have a lot of it, but did you want to ask for public comment, Madam Chair?
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment? Would you raise your hands? Ashley Cole. Go ahead.
I, I think, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you very much, Mr. Hegney. Deeply appreciated, because I was gonna forget.
Much obliged. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We are very anxious in the neighborhood to get traffic safety and are in a new egress, perhaps designed even better than the one that is on the plan right now. But I want to address my support for the students of Greenwich, Connecticut, but also the historic neighborhoods, of which we're one of them. So thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for working with us in planning and zoning. And I'm hoping we can make this high school beautiful and safe and an asset to the community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cole. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please raise your virtual hand. It doesn't look like it, Mr. Hegney. It looks like you only had Ms. Cole.
And I appreciate her comment.
Yeah, and it's good to hear that the neighbors are working with the Board of Education. That's really exciting. Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so with that, we will then, since we have no further pub, public comment and we have no comments from the commission, correct? We will close both these items. Is that agreed?
Sullivan, I apologize. I need to read a comment into the record. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I think that's the question that Mr. Hegney just answered for us. So go ahead and read it in, and then we'll be set.
Okay. It's from Mr. Bill Efros. It came in today. To whom it may concern, the town of Greenwich Board of Education would have you believe it has spent more than three years and a half million dollars without realizing until four days ago that the quote "existing access point" and quote "shown on its Cardinal Stadium site plan is for emergency vehicles only, and that due to wetlands drainage issues, it cannot build a handicap parking lot adjacent to the proposed stadium." In site plan after site plan, year after year, Board of Ed has claimed it could provide handicap access. Now it reveals four days before final site plan review by the commission that the stadium does not have and cannot get handicap access. If it could get it, the Board of Education would have it by now. P and Z cannot approve a site plan for half a house that does not comply with local, state, and federal regulations. And it can also, and it can also, and it also cannot, excuse me, approve half a $25 million stadium until everyone knows what that stadium is going to look like and if it will comply with local, state, and federal regulations. It is long past time for the Board of Ed to withdraw this application, and it is long past time for P and Z to stop indulging a Board of Ed site plan for a stadium that cannot legally be built at this location.
Okay.
Mr. DeLuca, I believe you, oh no, I'm sorry, wrong application. Nevermind. I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading down my emails here. Sorry.
Mr. Hegney, I believe you addressed that question. That was the.
I, I did, Madam Chair. The only item I would want to address that we didn't speak about was the access from East Putnam Avenue. It is not just for emergency vehicles only. There is a misconception that a prior stipulation and order of judgment that was entered into between the town and Mr. Efros somehow limits access off the, of East Putnam Avenue. That is not the case. We've reviewed that both with the Public Works Department and with the State Department of Transportation, both of which have indicated that this is an appropriate place to access this handicap parking lot, which is part of this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so with that, I will close these two items. I see no objection. Anybody who objects, please raise your hand. No? Okay, with that, we will close these two items. And Mr. Hegney, if you'd like to stay and remind me to ask for public comment, that'd be great.
I'm not sure I always want to do that, but.
It's usually Pat's job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so for our next application, we now have Meadowlark Manor LLC for a final site plan and special permit. Mr. Lowe will be seated for Mr. Yeski, who was seated for Mr. Fox, if that makes sense to everybody. We have asked. We, we had asked for. I'm just gonna have to talk through it. I'm sorry. We had asked for no public comment at this time. And what I'd like to do is start by actually closing this application, if that is agreeable to everyone.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, everybody agrees. I see no objection. Seeing no objection, we're gonna close this item and start discussion. If somebody would start the discussion, let me see if it helps to close the door.
I'll start the discussion. I guess we had left it, left it open to get some more background information. And I believe we wanted the, or the, that the applicant and the neighbors have a continued discussion about the project and maybe come to some agreement on that. The, we did get information from both the applicant and neighbors, but it seemed that there was no agreement on any specifics. So there was maybe 12, 12 or 13 items that were on that. I think one of the things that we had talked about, actually amongst ourselves, there was a request for a sunset clause. And I believe we actually resolved that, that actually it's one of those things that runs with the land or anything that's approved as part of a site plan or a special permit. Mrs. DeLuca, that's, that's, that's a correct statement? That it, there's no termination of it if it changes? Or there's nothing we can actually provide to a site plan special permit that will have an expiration date on it?
Right, the, the regulations read that it, that it's in the timeline that goes with the site plan, which does not have any, that does, as you said, runs with the land. Doesn't have a sunset clause.
Right. I think one of the other things that was talked about between the neighbors and the applicant.
Hold on just a second, Nick. Katie, I, it says the expiration of the site plan. So in theory, if they filed a completely different site plan at some point, then that special permit would expire. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So it doesn't really run with the land unless the site plan stays the same?
Well, that, I mean, all of these things that run with the land terminate at, at a point where there's a new approval on the property.
Okay, okay. It shall also, okay, so got it. Expires when the corresponding site plan approval expires.
Yeah.
Okey dokey. Go ahead, Nick, sorry.
I think there was discussion about off-site repairs. And I think what our, our discussion, it's something that's not in the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That would be a neighbor-to-neighbor kind of thing. If we had suggestions or, or thoughts on the site plan special permit issue, off-site repairs would not be part of that. Again, Mrs. DeLuca, that's, that's a correct issue. It's a, it's a issue between the applicant and a neighbor, not an issue that we can actually get into.
Say that again? I'm sorry.
So if, if, I guess there was, there was, there was questions or had, issues had come up about off-site repairs that would be, were requested by a neighbor of the applicant. Off-site repairs, yes. That actually there was, I guess, a.
Repair.
Something on the shoulder of the road was damaged.
Across the street.
Yeah.
Oh, see, okay.
Yeah. And I guess they wanted it to regrade it or reseed it or something like that. It's my understanding, actually, planning and zoning wouldn't get into that. That would actually be a discussion between the applicant and the neighbor directly.
Not if a neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, under, but under a special permit, if there's off, that's, that's what differentiates a special permit in many instances from a site plan is the ability to look at off-site impact improvements and what have you. So that is certainly something that you could condition if you wanted to.
Okay. Okay. In looking back a few, all of the notes and all the testimony we heard, it seemed that there were just a few number of issues that needed to really kind of resolve or compromise on. If, if I may, I have some thoughts on that and like to have the commission members applying if they have ideas or things to, to do.
If, I, I know that when I say this to the commission, I'm gonna be preaching to the choir. You guys all know this by heart. But I want to say this for the benefit of the people who are listening, that a special permit is for a use that would be allowed in the zone, but that because of its nature, requires an additional level of scrutiny because it may have, as Katie pointed out, off-site impacts, intensity, et cetera, which could alter the purposes for which the zone was created and affect those purposes. And so what we are reviewing when we review a special permit is, are we comfortable with this use being consistent with the intent of this zone? And are its implications for the zone such that it will not affect them? So I just wanted to say that because a lot of times people say, oh, the commission did a terrible thing. They approved a special permit, and that's illegal. It's not. It's a, a use that is allowed, but that may have more implications than a normal use in a zone. So I know you guys all know that, but I just wanted to say it because we do have a lot of people in the public who are listening to this. And I just wanted to be clear what we're doing. Katie, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify also that when, that when Mr. Mackey was referring to repairs, I assumed he was talking about repairs within the right-of-way. Obviously, you can't impose something on someone else's property, such as.
My understanding, yeah.
Yeah, so just.
Yeah, it's in the right-of-way or the edge of the, edge of the asphalt, if you would.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So does anybody have any comments before Nick's? Nick, were you saying that you had some thoughts on?
Yeah, I'd like to just throw some thoughts out to the other commission members. Maybe they have ideas about these couple of different things that had popped up between the meetings that we had, notes from the neighbors, notes from the applicant. We had to recede from counsel as well. So if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll run through this actually real quickly. I think one of the first one was actually the use of field itself. And I think actually, something I was thinking would be that there would be no commercial use, no paid coaches, no games or umpires, and no more than one Greenwich-based team is permitted to practice at the field. For parking, vehicles arriving to drop off or pick up team members are prohibited from parking outside the property wall or fences. For overflow parking, overflow parking remain accommodated by the use of the main driveway of existing residents. Bats, aluminum bats are prohibited during scheduled practice times, but aluminum bats are permitted for the use by the resident of the property and their children only. There was talk of runoff. Property owners shall limit as much as possible the use of fertilizers and pesticides on the playing field so as to mitigate the runoff to the adjacent pond. Practice times, and this is what I called from actually the back and forth here. Practice would be prohibited to take place on Sundays. I think that's kind of a no-brainer. A maximum of three team practices per week. Team practice should end by 6:30 PM and 5:00 PM on Saturdays. There were a question about team signs. I thought maybe the team signage and banners should not be visible from the street, adjacent properties or from across the pond. There was an issue of playing field maintenance. All ground maintenance work on the playing field. Associated equipment and accessory buildings should be limited to once per week. Regular maintenance of the existing residential landscape should be excluded from that. That way they can take care of the house, but maintenance on the playing field, you know, once a week. There was questions about the screening. Thought that the existing screening, if proposed evergreen screening around the practice area should be maintained in good health at all times, replaced in kind if necessary. And then we had talked about the sunset clause, and I believe that's kind of out of our purview on that. And then we can discuss about the, the off-site repairs. To what extent? I'm not too sure what's, you know, I haven't seen what the repairs need to be or anything like that. So I really had no thought on that at all. I don't know if anybody had any other thoughts or comments on any, any one of those issues?
My only thought is that three times a week, I think, is beyond the pale of what I'm, I think is appropriate here.
Okay.
I'd like to get, I'd like to get clarification perhaps from Katie on your back and forth with Mr. Donald Moore on, on the assignment and availability of fields. And I followed that email trail, but I found myself not quite satisfied that I understood what the, the answer to your question was.
Yeah, I had a similar problem. That's why you see me try to keep digging down and, and try to.
Yeah, it was pretty funny.
But what I had understood is that they have the field for one evening during the week and one two-hour block on the weekend, either Saturday or Sunday. And that they can ask for more time, but he tries to be as fair as possible across all the teams, is what I had understood. So they have one day of practice and one day, you know, one weekday practice and one, one weekend block.
Which is kind of a guarantee. And then it, and then it becomes, as available, a field will be assigned to a given team upon request. But he seems rather silent even to, on the issue of commenting what generally happens. Or do, do most teams get, you know, ask for two, two or three field or two, you know, a field for two or three additional times during the week and generally get it? Or they don't? Or that's where I kind of was. Or that's where I kind of was a little fuzzy.
Yeah, I think he, I think it seems to me that he makes it such that he fairly divvies out what is available, the resource that is available. So just because you come first and say, I want five days a week is, that's not going to happen. You know, so he understands, yeah, that everyone's going to be asking for things. And so I think they make it, they go about their response based on being fair to everyone. And then I think his point was if people are doing things that are outside of parks and rec, go ahead, they don't, that's not something that they're going to be concerned about or regulate.
Right, so if you had a team that wished to schedule four or five practices a week, including during the weekend, what I'm reading is that the town will, weather permitting, be able to assign that given team at least, fields on at least two or roughly 40% of the time, they're going to get a field. And therefore, the need on the part of any given team would be based upon how much they want to practice and probably they wouldn't actually need more than an additional three days a week or something. Is that, I mean, has anyone else read that as I did?
Yes, Mr. Lai, I get the same sense that, you know, they provide, they're trying to be even-handed across, and as Mrs. De Luca said, you know, it's that one game or one practice in the two-hour block on the weekend sort of thing. But he tries to accommodate the requests. But I think actually it's that this varies because of game schedules and other activities, vary the effect of the fields that can be given out. So it's a kind of a moving target for him. And that they do the best that they can. And I think actually it's understanding that they've got three different, three different levels of the leagues and a finite number of fields that they have. I also get the sense that he tries to accommodate as best he can, giving the limits that he has. So, but I believe, I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Lai.
Anybody else have comments?
I have a comment.
Ms. Goss.
Yes, Mr. McRae, you had said, you had suggested for the, you were just suggested three times, three times a week for practices. But my question is, does this, is it three times a week from January the first to December the 31st? Or is it three times a week from June, July and August? Or is it three times a week for March, April and May? It seems like we need a time range for that.
You're right, I actually did not get into a length of the season. It was just the, the times that the field would be used for a practice per week and the times that they're actually there. We can, if you believe we should, actually, you know, add specific times from April to whenever, or, you know, whatever you think it is.
Whatever the season is, the season is not all year round.
See, that's what I'm not, that's what I, I don't know when the season is. And maybe the neighbors want some clarification on that.
It's the spring.
I think the season begins in April. And the regular season goes through to sometime in June. And then when they have playoffs or then they pick an all-star team, then that can run into the summer. But it's not, we're not talking about November, December and January and February and, you know, most of March.
My notes from back in June, this beginning of June, the season ran from the middle of April to the middle of July, depending on what happens with the teams. And that's actually, I guess, the regular season would be the middle of April to about the 10th or the middle of June. I don't know if anybody has similar notes to that?
I don't have notes, that's my recollection.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think Victoria's hit on a key point. And I propose, we say there's a four-month period that starts, you know, in April and ends in July. Let them pick the date. And I'd go one step further, Nick, even though I love this idea that the applicants providing such a great facility, sort of trying to be King Solomon again and way the requests from the neighbors. I'd advocate for five sessions over each two-week period with only one on Saturday.
I think that would be five practices?
Five practices over, in each two-week period, one of which can be on a Saturday. And I'm saying that based on my sense that neighbors are more likely to be at home on Saturday post-pandemic.
Right, okay, so it's, for example, over the course of two weeks, two practices one week and two practices, three practices the next week, and one of those could be a Saturday. Is that what you're saying? As an example?
Two per week with one additional practice on a Saturday within a two-week period.
Okay.
I think two per week is plenty.
And this, this is with a backdrop that these teams would have access and they would be provided with a town facility on at least two other days, correct?
That's my understanding.
So it's, it's understanding that, yes, they would be able to practice on a town field as according to what Parks and Rec had provided to us. Mr. Hardman, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. It's the two per week with one per Saturday. Would that be like every other Saturday or something? I want to make sure that I've got that right, what your intent is.
That's right, Nick. Sorry, a little more complicated, but I'm just mindful that Saturday is maybe more of a hot button for the neighbors.
Thank you.
So are you guys, yeah. So when we heard the neighbors and the people who were using a facility, the one side is minding the invasion of privacy and has felt that the use has been too intense. The other side feels that, I love this characterization, that it would be Orwellian to forgive, forbid children from having fun and playing baseball. And I understand, I love to hear the sound of children playing. But at the same time, my take is even just listening to all the conditions you're putting on this special permit means that by definition, it's uncomfortable and you're making so many restrictions because it's really beyond what should be going on in this neighborhood. And so you're changing it to make it acceptable. And in your view, it then becomes acceptable, but how does one enforce this? And more the point is, what precedent are you setting? Because if we got 10 more of these, we would have to have a zoning enforcement squad dedicated to making sure that there were only two practices here and that there were no aluminum bats there and that somebody else wasn't having a hockey championship. And so I think it's creating a precedent of giving a special permit that has to be very heavily conditioned and that therefore has to be enforced and that is not a natural use to the zone. And so therefore, I do not feel that this proposed use is naturally consistent with the purposes of the zone. So that's where I come out and that's it. So, but based on that, if you all, I mean, if, if the vote comes out in favor, the one condition I would make very clear is that if these conditions were not met, that the special permit, we have a right to revoke a special permit and we would revoke it. And of course, as we discussed yesterday, a revocation would again mean that the zoning enforcement officer would have to go out because it isn't enough to have neighbors report it a violation. It has to be verified. And so it's tying up our staff. I just don't think it's, okay, but I would just ask you to put that in, that it can be revoked. That it would be revoked, but there you go.
I agree with that.
So, okay. So with that, Mr. McRae, would you like to make a motion? And then I will take, I will call on each of you for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we, we're in the public hearing. We have to wait for the end of the meeting, don't we?
No.
No?
No, no, you can do it now since it's on.
Madam Chair, I will just note that the applicant has said that he has not been able to watch the meeting until eight o'clock, so he was expecting that we would vote at the end. I don't know if you want to oblige them by voting at the end of the meeting or.
You know, one thing is that he can watch it online tomorrow.
I don't disagree, I just passing the message.
Yeah, and since they're not having an opportunity for public comment, as long as we're this far, I think we might as well take the vote and move on.
Just going to say, the decision.
I mean, I think applicants forget, and I'm reminding all the applicants and their representatives, all the meetings are available online nowadays. So even if you don't think we are aware of something, we may be aware of it because everything's available online. So with that, let's go ahead, then, Mr. Hardman.
Yeah, I just, you know, we're not voting on a stationary target here. We've got different opinions, different suggestions. And just procedurally, are we going to go through a series of motions until?
I think you have to agree on what's in Mr. McRae's motion.
Well, then I just sort of suggest that, you know, it seems like the least common denominator is Mr. Levy's position of two per week.
Okay.
Peter?
Peter?
Yeah, he's on mute.
Unmute yours.
I really, I really think that one per week is plenty. And like maybe three, three per two weeks might be fine. I just think that it, there's plenty of opportunities to use town fields, and I just feel that this is an overreach.
But I thought.
And I don't, I completely agree with Margarita.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that, okay.
So I thought you said earlier, two per week was.
Yes, I did. I said that I certainly don't think that the, the five per two weeks, I just think it's just.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we take your position of two per week in hopes of trying to get a consensus here, at least to make a motion.
Well, then I would do three for two weeks. To take your initiative.
And that would be three for two weeks as opposed to five? Yeah, again, but Saturday.
One of which would be on a Saturday?
Which, I don't care about that.
Okay, so then what I'm understanding, it's a three-practice-for-two-week schedule with one that could, can take place every other Saturday? That's what I'm understanding you're saying?
Yes, and I think that it's really, unfortunately, is incumbent upon the the neighbors to be, you know, to police this and kind of putting it in their lap.
Or perhaps more gently, monitor compliance.
Yes, because they can't really, you know, the problem is it's not legit until Jody, until zoning enforcement monitors it. So neighbors can report something, but there you are. Okay.
Look, I will say, I think the applicant has tried to present reasonable propositions and didn't, doesn't come across to me as someone who wants to skirt what we, what we decide on this. But, I mean, that's beside the point, but I hope it won't become a zoning enforcement exercise.
Well, my concern is not just this one, it's also what happens. Are we opening a door? And then where does this go? Because we are now saying that it's okay to have playing fields on private property and have team events on private property. And we're issuing a special permit for that.
But this is team practice. We're not allowing team, we're not allowing competition between teams. I think there is, there is a distinct difference.
I, my concern is that you're setting a precedent. And what happens, and several of our prominent attorneys are listening right now, and you set the precedent and the envelope gets pushed and you create something that, but that's just, I mean, that's how I view it, that you then create something that just continues to grow until you finally have to draw the line. Are you comfortable with this type of use becoming pervasive in residential zones?
And it's really the formalized nature of what is being proposed, I believe, that speaks to the compromise of what the regulations dictate. Would you agree, Margarita?
Yes, and also the fact that we're spending so much time conditioning. It means that it doesn't occur naturally. You know, if somebody builds a house or puts in a swimming pool, you don't say to them, you don't make a whole list of conditions. You can't stand outside your house after 10 o'clock at night and you can't have any more than three barbecues a year. You know, where we're going with this means that it isn't a great fit for the zone, as I see it. It has to be conditioned that much. If it was a natural fit in the zone, it wouldn't require. Now, I get that we heavily condition school uses. And I see that as a bit different. That's also a special permit in a residential zone, a school use, but I see that differently. This is, this is a private, supposedly private, non-public activity.
Only in lots over four acres. I mean, this is a big lot. It's 4.7 acres, as I recall.
But you're not restricting this, this special permit to four acres. It's not restricted, and this is, there's nothing here that says it can only.
It could be in the record, but that was one of the considerations and.
I, I'm not sure that if you're giving an approval for a special permit for one specific property, you can say it will only apply to this, to properties this size unless it's, we add it to the regs. Katie?
Yeah.
So you can't add it to the reg, unless you actually put in the regs. Yes, you can only have recreation areas by special permit on lots over four acres. Unless you're going to change the regs, you can't, you can't limit it on this decision. So, okay, do you guys have an agreement of how you would go with a resolution?
Well, Nick, I just suggest we go with Peter's formulation because trying again to make a decision between two parties here, I don't know how we can sort of argue amongst ourselves.
Right. I have a, a three-per-two-week period with one per every other Saturday. Is that, is that, is that the intent of your, your thoughts on this, Peter?
I am not making that extra charge of whether the third one is on a Saturday or not. If you think that's a good idea, that's, I suppose it's all right. I don't.
I think it gets back to what Mr. Hardman had talked about, is that, you know, it's one Saturday, but not every Saturday. Is that correct, Mr. Hardman?
Correct.
Is it better, but is it better not to do it during the weekend then? Can't you just say, just not on the weekend? I mean, I don't know. There are other fields available in town. That's the other strange thing about this. We, we're making much of a do about the lack of field space, but there are fields and they are available. And people do use them, obviously. So I'm not so inclined to give them anything and everything they want. I appreciate what everybody on the commission is saying, and I'm willing to go along to some extent. I'm extremely concerned, as is Margarita, about the creep here. But I think that the commission is, commission so far have, have wanted to do something here, and I'm willing to go along with it.
Okay.
Well, that, that was going to be my next question is. Well, that, that was going to be my next question is whether you rather than starting with a, a proposal of X number of practices per week, if you've got a couple of commissioners who are uncomfortable with the entire issue, um, does that need, is that a first step that we should take to get us to then articulate um, what the terms are?
Well, Peter, I, I, I think just to move this thing and, and address it, we need to have a proposal and we vote on it, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. But I don't think it's going to pass if you know, several of us who you know, appear to favor something, some number of practices, you know, we, we won't succeed in passing anything if we don't go to the highest or lowest bar, depending on what we want to call it. So I, I think we.
I think that there is some consensus, overall consensus amongst the neighbors and the applicant of one time per week. So we could, I don't mind the idea of three times every two weeks, I think that uh.
That's what I'm saying, Peter, I think we'd start with your proposition.
Yeah.
See if that passes or not, I mean.
Good.
Nick, don't you love this job?
Yeah.
Guy tries to do something helpful and everybody beats him up.
That's okay, that's, that's my job.
All right, so you ready to take a shot at this?
Yeah, uh, I'm sure I've got all my notes here. Okay, uh, 56 Clapperton Ridge Road, final site plan, PLPZ 2020, uh, 0100. Uh, whereas the applicant is requesting final approval, uh, final site plan and special permit to maintain a little league baseball field as a recreational area on a residential property. Uh, the commission finds that conservation had issued comments dated 5/27/20 and 5/27/20 indicating a recommendation for sustainable well care methods. Um, the zoning department had issued a memo dated 5/20 saving, stating that the proposal meets the requirements of the BZR. And the wetlands commission issued a green sheet on 4/20/20. Therefore, motion to approve the application for final site plan and special permit with the following conditions. The use of the field, uh, no commercial use, paid coaches, games, or umpires. No more than one Greenwich based team is permitted to practice at the field. Uh, parking, vehicles arriving to drop off or pick up team members are prohibited from parking outside the property wall or fences. Uh, overflow parking, overflow parking shall be accommodated by the use of the main driveway of the existing residence. Uh, bats, aluminum bats are prohibited during scheduled practice times. Aluminum bats are permitted for the use by the resident of the property and their children only. Uh, the property shall make runoff, excuse me, the property owner shall limit the, as much as possible the use of fertilizers and pesticides on the playing field so as to mitigate runoff to the adjacent pond. Uh, practice times, practice is prohibited to take place on Sundays with a maximum of three per two week period with one per every other Saturday, team practices, team practices. Uh, team practice shall end by 6:30 PM and 5:00 PM on Saturdays for a four month period from mid April to mid July. Um, team signage, team signage and banners shall be not visible from the street, adjacent properties uh, or across the pond. Uh, playing field maintenance, all ground maintenance work on the playing field, associated equipment and accessory structures shall be limited to once per week. Regular maintenance of the existing residential landscape is excluded from that once per week. Uh, screening, the existing and proposed evergreen screening around the practice area shall be maintained in good health at all times and replaced in kind if necessary. Um, if conditions uh, of the site plan, special permit approval are not met, then the special permit is subject to be revoked. Uh, did we want to discuss or have anything about the off-site repairs?
Sounds good.
Off-site repairs?
Yes.
What about?
Within the, within the easement, easement?
Within the right of way.
Yeah, right away, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Nick, Nick, one, one thing, um, you said a four month period, mid April to mid July. Um, I think that's a three month period.
I knew, who knew, Julio, yeah, he's right.
Okay, three months?
Uh. Is that, I mean, you guys.
Mrs. Dawson, are you still on, I, I think that's actually what you had suggested, mid April to mid July, correct?
Well, just so they cover.
Actually, Victoria.
During the baseball season.
Victoria's, no, Victoria's not seated on this.
Okay.
But it's not closed, is it?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry about that, okay?
Oh, it is closed, we closed it at the beginning, right, okay.
Okay, um. Off-site repairs, I think the issue with that is actually it's, it's it's not requiring an off-site repair, but actually, how do we suggest or re uh, strongly suggest that the neighbors and the applicant work on some kind of agreement to, to doing that? Uh, I never really witnessed any kind of, you know, um, issue with the, uh, the, the the shoulder up there, um, so I don't know if anybody's got any suggestions on how to write that out?
Hasn't the shoulder been repaired?
Uh, I, I don't know.
You could just say that the, the applicant will make best efforts to uh, maintain uh, the condition uh, uh, of the right of way. Uh, accord, uh, as, as uh, 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 during, during those times, during this, uh, this, uh, baseball season.
Yeah, but the, the issue is, uh, repairing damaged or disturbed area, uh, that's already taken place, not moving forward as well, so uh, I think, Nick, isn't that right?
Yes, I believe that's what it is, uh.
Yeah, I think he, that's already been done, but we can sort of say and continue to ensure that traffic coming in and out of the playing field area doesn't degrade the public right of way.
But if it hasn't been done, then it should be done.
Well, I think, I, I think the applicant told us it had been done, and I kind of remember riding by there not too long ago and it looked looked to me to be okay.
So, uh, let's see, uh, how about this, um, applicant shall use best efforts to minimize damage to the Clapperton Ridge right of way.
And to repair any.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, I mean, this is, we're, oh, Katie's not there, Pat, I don't think we can ask an applicant to minimize damages in the town in the right of way. It can't happen.
If, if the pull-off was pulled with permits from the highway division, it should have been uh, approved and reviewed with conditions for its repair, so if the right of way of the town has been impacted in any way, uh, there's two ways about it. They either need to follow their permit, or they need to, or the highway should go out and tell them what's not good, or what has been damaged and what needs to get fixed. Um, so, uh, if that's not obvious to be attributable to the pull-off, then I, I don't, I don't know how we figure out whose damage it was and who needs to repair it.
I think, I think, Mr. Glor, you're correct, it's that, you know, where is the damage, who caused the damage? You know, if it's, if it's part of his approved uh, uh, highway encroachment permit, that's one thing, but if it's across the street or down the street or something, uh, I don't know how we can.
If it's a shoulder, sorry, Mr. McRae, if, if it's a shoulder that people have been parking on, um, you know, I, I think neighbors should be looking to each other to, to fix those wrongs that have happened, but my understanding, the applicant is prepared to not allow, or, you know, is willing to not let that happen anymore because they have a pull-off area on their site, and they also have opened the driveway up for um, as needed, so um, that's, you know, I, I think it's been mitigated by the application and not, um, but retroactively, I'm not quite sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if fixed damage has been done, which he's now eliminated the condition for the damage, so I'm, I'm a little funny on this off-site repair issue.
Why don't we just, why don't you just make it simple and say that applicant has to comply with all the conditions that were given on in the permit by that highway department, because they wouldn't have been able to, I certainly hope that DP, that we don't have a sign off on a site plan without DPW agreeing, and he has to, they have to comply with all the conditions that were given by the DPW hi, by highway department, full stop. Rather than, because this thing about minimize what they damage is not a good way to go in my mind, but you know.
I think saying best efforts is a, is a good, um, kind of overall way of saying be a good citizen.
Right, it's very subjective, though.
Well, it's something, you know, if, if they're if they're, if, if they're deficient in, in uh, in maintaining the right of way in a, in a neighborly way, then somebody has something to say, that's all.
Okay.
Uh, I, I'd just like to point out one more thing, right, you know, we don't know if baseball's going to be played this year. And um, so I, I don't know if the commission wants to tie the practices to an, an actual season on the calendar or the season as it's played, because um, i- if there is late summer, fall baseball or whatever under Cal Ripken, i- is, is the applicant going to not be allowed to, to do that at all this year and then has to wait till next May? I guess is the question, I'm, I'm not saying we should change, I'm just asking if that's the direction.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it wouldn't really matter since it's just going to be every year if, between certain months, so it doesn't matter if it's this year or next year or whatever.
No, but, no, what he's saying is that they may alter the, the dates of this season because of COVID, that that the 2020 season, which was compromised or eliminated, got pushed to the fall, for example, is that what you're saying?
That, that is what I'm saying, are we, are we, are we very, is the commission very focused on the seasonality of it on a calendar year and not the season as in the, the competition?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Patrick.
I, I will, I, I agree with what, because I said both things, so I'm trying to, I, I just want to, I want to, I just, I'm asking for clarity for the, for the record as, as to what what the, um, you know, the, the, whatever.
Why don't you just make it consistent, why don't you make it easy for everybody, you guys, and just make it consistent with the town use of their baseball fields, the same timing, because these kids are supposed to be doing a supplemental practice to what's available in the town, so why don't you just tie it to what the town's schedule is?
So I'm trying to understand when, when we can define, um, when the applicant is in compliance and when they're not, and.
Well, it's, that's why I'm saying, why don't you just do it with when the town from the date the town makes fields available for public play to when the town stops that play, and then your great advantage is if you have another COVID, it'll immediately freeze because the town will have the fields closed.
Yeah, because I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for timelines as expressed by the, the applicant, and I'm, I'm seeing end of July competitions from 2019.
Well, I don't, yeah, oh, and then you're saying they go into tournament play, but.
Wondering, yeah, I'm just wondering.
The man who emailed us from the town, Donald Moore, I think he said, he talked about that they have the fields available for tournament play and then they bump people, so if you stay with the town's schedule and what's available, you should have the flexibility, you guys think?
Makes sense. Yeah, so instead of a three month period defined by mid April, mid July, it's actually then would be coincident with, uh, uh.
The baseball season.
Coincident with the town of Greenwich, Parks and Recreation.
Baseball season, yeah.
Yeah, but that, it's really the Cal Ripken baseball schedule.
Okay, well, you guys decide, but remember that the argument is that they need this because the town doesn't have enough facilities, so that's why I threw it out there, but go ahead, I don't know, go ahead, you guys make up your minds.
So Nick, I had two questions, one, and I may just not have heard you, is there a time limit for each practice?
Uh, it's actually an end time, so team practice 6:30 PM and uh, for weekdays and 5:00 PM on Saturdays.
I, I think we should probably have, you know, not greater than two hours or.
Yeah, that would be good, because otherwise it could be all day until 6:30.
Right, and second, you mentioned fertilizers, I think. I know the applicant.
Conservation.
Made a point about using natural fertilizer of some sort. But I thought I heard you say no fertilizer.
Uh, it states, uh, the property owner shall limit as much as possible the use of fertilizers and pesticides on the playing field so as to mitigate runoff into the adjacent pond. Then that was actually, I think what we heard from both sides was, you know, they don't want, they don't want the pond to be contaminated. Uh, so I think using the fertilizers, you know, limiting the fertilizers and pesticides on the playing field so it doesn't run off into the pond, I think that's what I'm trying to say there. You know, if they use nothing, that's great, if they use a little bit, maybe that's okay, but don't go hog wild and keep it green whenever they, everybody else's lawn is burning.
Well, pesticides are different than fertilizer, so you were using, you're talking about both.
Both, that way, you know, we're covered on both ends.
Why use pesticides when you have kids around, I don't, I don't get that.
I'm just, I just, what I put in, if you want me to take it out, I can do that.
Yeah, because.
I think so, I, I, I don't like the idea of uh, including.
So the town parks and rec guidelines is all organic.
So just have them follow the town guidelines.
And the other thing is, don't forget there is a pond in the back and a, and a wetland dairy, so I don't know.
No encroachment in the buffer.
Yeah, how the Wetlands Agency would feel about fertilizers, I'm sure they wouldn't enjoy, they wouldn't want that.
No.
Yeah, but at this, at the same time, I, you know, are they putting fertilizers on their own lawn? Are the neighbors putting fertilizers on their lawns? You know, how does that work out? Um, I think what I was saying here is that actually, you know, the fertilizer for the playing field should be limited in their use. Uh, you know, under the, with the understanding that, you know, you, you don't want them to run off into the pond. So.
Yeah.
I, I think if you keep it to town standards, I think that's a pretty good one, especially if they use organics, so.
That's a good, that's a good suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, and also, also when they have, um, uh, this got a wetland sign off, this application originally, and when it got a wetland, because it's got the wetlands, so the wetlands standards, the wetlands conditions, another thing to just say is that all the wetlands conditions should continue to be followed because they have, you know, protection of the buffer and you know, no landscaping in the buffer, now they were going to add some landscaping, are you having that go in with the site plan? Because you're, we're doing both the special permit and the site plan here.
Uh, I believe all the landscaping's in, that's what we had from testimony before, we just wanted to make sure that the landscaping and this proper screening that's been installed is maintained.
Yep.
You got a dead tree, take the tree out, put a new one back in.
Yep.
Okay, um. Okay, following kind of various standards and the times. Uh. Okay, so it's a maximum of two hours per occurrence, you'd say? Mr. Hardman?
Yeah.
Katie must be.
Break to you.
Sorry? Two hours.
But two hours was reasonable.
Mm-hmm. That's what the man in the email said, I think.
Okay. And the time period is coincident with the town of Greenwich League play?
Yep. Town of Greenwich, Parks and Rec, whatever, um, the wording, we could ask staff to just make that really clear in the decision letter.
So it, it, so that, that represents an adjustment to that three month period, is that correct?
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Yep.
Right, okay. So I've got, uh, practice prohibited to take place on Sundays, uh, maximum of three per two week period with one every other Saturday. Um, team practice shall be limited to two hours per occurrence, coincident with the town of Greenwich League play. Coincident with the town of Greenwich, uh, Parks and Recreation season League play, okay, I think that works.
Well, uh, to Dave's, one of Dave's points, I want to ask Dave, um, is this, is your idea or proposal or thinking? or proposal or thinking that this be restricted or peculiar to the Cal Ripken League itself and not any younger or older league, for example?
You know, that's I've been thinking about how complex this is and we just put something in here that gives Katie some discretion to interpret, you know, fine details like that.
Yes, you could. Now, I would steer away from from mentioning one specific league. I mean, that that could change, the name could change. I mean, so just if they just want to have baseball practice, it doesn't really matter if it's Cal Ripken or Babe Ruth or whatever. I mean, I would stay away from that and just say you're allowed to use the fields in this capacity, you know, with these restrictions, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, so you guys ready?
Yes.
Okey dokey. Mr. McRae, might I have a motion?
That was the motion.
That was the motion.
That's the whole motion? Okay, I'm not sure I got all the.
Let's go. We'll start at the beginning.
I'm happy to read it if you need a break.
No, I've got it. So we did the whereas for maintaining a little league, the findings from conservation zoning and wetlands, therefore motion to approve the application for final site plan and special permit with the conditions we just talked about.
Okay. All righty, is there a second for this motion?
I second.
Mr. Hardman has second. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Levy is aye. Hardman?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye.
Low?
Aye.
And Diamond A for the reasons given previously, and that was for both of his final site plan and special permit. I so that was that passed with a vote of four one with Albin voting against and the other members voting in favor. And with that, we are going to take a 15. Actually, let's take a 16 minute break, guys. I have 7:14 on my clock. We're going to shoot to be seated here at 7:30. Sorry, public, but I had a request for a break, couple of them. So here we go. Bye.
Four and the P cars on Fairfield Road are in the morning, obviously, when schools in the area start and in the afternoon, probably around 2:30 to 3:30 when the high school lets out. So to a great extent, that's how we've been able to manage the additional traffic, which is relatively modest from the high school activities at the at the the fields. And I'd also like to point out that it's already occurring to some extent because they've had JV, boys and girls soccer and hockey games and whatnot. So that's already happening. With regard to the the monitoring program, it the event management and it requires monitoring. So at the games, the school is going to document basically how many people are parked and they're reported recorded and if there's a parking problem, they're recorded and that will be held in the file throughout the season. And at the end of the season, then they'll go through and and report it to me and report it to the school. And at the end of the next season, to the town, at the end of the next season, they'll do the same. And at the end of the school year, it will be the school's responsibility to have me or a certainly qualified traffic engineer to look at the plans, see where it worked, see where it didn't work, make changes, talk to DPW, agree with the changes, and then have a new plan or an updated plan ready for the following year. So basically, the plan will monitor, it'll verify, it'll update. And there was another thing that it's going to do, let me see, I've jotted down.
It's going to improve.
Yes.
It'll improve over the previous level of service. You're going to look at the level of service changes?
So the level of service changes are part of the traffic study as opposed to the event traffic.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm hitting both of the things that you've done here.
Right.
Just in the interest of time as it's pushing nine o'clock, we've, you know, been here for four hours already.
I understand.
So both so you're going to do the parking assessment. You're also gonna one of the big questions is you're going to have the off duty police. How is that going to work? Is that keeping the traffic moving and all that? And what's happening with level of service? I think that a list of how we're going to do the look back, how we're going to make sure that the impact on the neighborhood is minimal and managed and improved. That's really the key from all this because I think you've done an extraordinary job laying it out. The complexity of it really I had trouble with. It's a lot of pieces, moving pieces in all of this.
Right.
But it if but the opportunity to go back and adjust it is fantastic.
Yeah, well, it's essentially it's integral to the plan, basically. I mean,
Yes.
that's how plans work. You make a plan, you verify it and you modify it so that it continues to work.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so that's the thing. So very super happy that we can do that. But it's just a question of before we finish up this application, what are we going to measure? I mean, clearly, it's the level of service at the bad intersections and whether or not you ran out of parking and whether or not you had trouble, not at an intersection, but just with keeping keeping the traffic flowing with the police guiding people in. And I think I can't think of anything else. Can you guys think of anything else that's key to this, Katie?
Yeah, I to me, it all comes down to Cardinal Road. And it suggested to Mr. Canning, it's actually a traffic counter on the north side of the bridge of Cardinal Road, because I would think actually vehicles going in and out to the site is probably the thing that's really going to make the intersection at Fairfield, you know, congested or an issue.
Yes.
Understanding that actually, there should be no more than the the what is it, the 43 spaces occupied and the 32 down midstream there in the existing parking lot. Mr. Canning, I'm kind of at odds here. I see, what's it, 426 spaces up at the Old Church Road campus and then another 184 overflow grass parking spaces.
Yeah, that's what you asked yesterday.
And I think it gets back to Cardinal Road, which really it's being improved but not widened. And I think that's the the real problem. I think many of the other commissioner members have is that that we worked on on going back and forth with shuttles back up to the Stanwych Road campus. But now are we actually adding a lot of vehicular traffic on Cardinal Road with this overflow? And it would seem to me I really have a lot of trouble with adding so many cars to that portion of Cardinal Road.
So, Mr. McRae, if I may, I think part of this issue arrives from the fact that when we started this process, this board asked us to look at the worst thing that could possibly happen down at the Cardinal Road fields and how would we park everybody? And what we said is, well, at the time, we had, I think, 105 parking spaces at the fields plus the 31 for Greenwich Skating Club. And we had 230 up at the paved spaces up at the Old Church Road campus. And we said, and we also have 197 overflow low grass spaces up at the Old Church Road campus. And we have 184 that we could accommodate on the fields down by Cardinal Road. So we what we were saying is, look, we have more parking than anybody could ever need. It's our position that we're never going to use the grass parking because we have enough between the paved spaces up at Old Church Road. And the plan is that when the modest soft opening number of spaces, which is now, I think, a total of 106, is expected to fill up, the plan will be that we will direct parents and pre-plan and instruct visiting parents to head up to the Old Church Road campus and walk down. And if the athletics program is very successful and they have championship games and we expect an even bigger crowd, we know we have enough paved parking up there, we provide shuttles. So I hope that explains why we're showing all of this parking and that we're not going to need it and that the modest soft opening number of parking spaces down on Cardinal Road, which is 106, is not going to lead to an insurmountable number of vehicles there. And I think it's a good idea that we would place an automatic traffic recorder on the road a couple of times each season, just to for a week to document what a week of typically busy activity would be.
Okay, because I think I can appreciate what I'm seeing here with the parking and what you have at Old Church Road, the shuttle that goes back and forth for spectators. My just my biggest concern is that if we are identifying an overflow parking area, I just want to make sure that doesn't become a, you know, a permanent parking area for use of the field. And I maybe some kind of a maybe some kind of a trigger, when does that actually get used? And how does it get used? Because I just don't want it to become the normal thing that happens every single day.
So I think the school would be happy to have some sort of condition that it's really not used unless it's absolutely necessary. And I we don't believe that it will be because it's not ideal to have cars park on all fields on a regular basis because they'll just damage them over time, especially if you do that in an opportune time.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, so question, Mr. Canning. So my level of service deteriorates somewhere. Are you going to be able to work back? How much of that is you?
Yeah, we should be able to because.
That's what we would like.
Yeah, we'll be basically what we'll be doing is we'll be counting the level of activity on Cardinal Road.
Okay.
I suspect we'll count the level of activity at the Stanwych School driveways as well because we made projections as to what they would be. And we'd be able to determine whether our projections were accurate, whether traffic was higher or lower than we projected and what impact that difference would make.
So again, it's back to if you don't have to come and sit here and listen to us for hours, but if you could just send something in when you all, you know, that we have it when, you know, when you're we're ready to when we've got DPW signed off, that's just kind of what is a look back gonna gonna be? How do what how are we going to measure this quote soft off and opening on the event management as well as the overall traffic? Okay, that's all. What are we looking for? How do we know whether or not it's okay?
Okay.
And okay.
Yes, and Madam Chair, I
Yes, sir.
I've just been pinged on the side to say that if it would make.
Oh, we pinged you again. They're dictating to you. Yes.
Yes, they are. I'm sorry.
That's bad, Mr. Cohen. Go ahead.
If it would make it more more comfortable, we could remove the 197 overflow grass parking spaces and the 184 overflow grass parking spaces from the plan because we're confident that with the 100 on the on the Cardinal Roads and the 230 up at the Old Church Road, we have more than enough. So if that's the way the board feels, we'd be happy.
Nick?
Well, actually, let's let's kind of just quickly talk about that. I think to me, I am actually more concerned about the the traffic and having 184 cars on Cardinal Road. That being said, if if I would be okay or uncomfortable if you kept the overflow up on the Old Church Road campus, that would be okay with me. Because that's that's where it's, you know, it can start. That's where you have your overflow. And it's actually using all of Old Church and your site and people walking down the hill. It keeps it keeps too many cars from going down the narrow Cardinal Road and into that intersection on Fairfield and Brookside.
Okay, we will make that change.
Okay, and Mr. Canning?
Yes.
I have suddenly realized, much as you are pinged, that this is a must close at our next meeting.
Oh, I was supposed to say that, too. Thank you.
Yes. So if you would kindly make sure that we have that that look back plan, some it doesn't have to be anything fancy, just a list of things that goes into the file that we are going to measure neighborhood impact and then everybody can noodle together and make sure that this is working.
Okay, gotcha.
I might add is when you is what are we going to do about if it's not working? We're gonna they're gonna fix it. Mr. Canning, I have his name on the Bible. He's going to fix it.
That's part of the plan, definitely.
But that's going to be you're going to take remedial action and that may mean reducing your events.
Scheduling is a big part of it, event management. That's that's in the name of the plan. So.
Yeah, or building a non-regulation field up at the Stanwych Campus on 257. So bottom line, you have to remediate the problem. Okey doke. So that's good. And you don't even have to come back. If you just send it where you know, we've got a plan to put in place, we're good, I think.
Okay.
Does any commissioner have any comments at this point?
Now, then, before we let John go, I'd like him to answer Mr. Lowe's question about how come the reduced parking on on that lower parking lot works and the other one worked too?
Sure.
I think that was sort of what he asked. I agree with Mr. Lowe.
Yes. So Pat, would it be possible for you to go to slide 38? Back up, I think it's up to next one. Oh, my numbers might be a little different. Yeah, I think that's it. Nope. So I can sit with this one. So this basically what we did for next year is we sat down with Mr. Hellstein and we said, okay, show us your schedule. How many kids are on a team? How many how many parents you think are going to show up for each team? And we prepared this graph. And basically, for the fall of next year, we expect that there'll be 70 cars on a weekday. Actually, this I know this says fall, but this is actually the spring, I think, for some reason. We said 70 cars on a weekday and 30 cars on a Saturday. If you can go to the previous slide, Pat? Please?
Yes.
Spring. So I think that the seasons may be off or maybe my memory is wrong. So this was, I believe, the fall season when there's soccer. And with the introduction of the varsity games, there'd be more people attending and we projected that there would be 90 cars on the busiest weekday and 100 cars for varsity football on a Saturday. And where we got to our original numbers were which were probably 30 or 40 vehicles higher, we basically did the same thing back in January with Mr. Hellstein for full enrollment when they'd have a greater student population, more support for the games. And that's kind of how we got to the original plan.
Yeah.
And we scaled it back for the soft opening short term.
I'm lighting a candle for you to get that property up. It's more property up on 257. Okay, Mr. Low, are you good with that answer?
Well, your suggestion of a candle at a church is sort of interesting, but I'm
Okay, Mr. Low is. Yeah, I didn't say in a. Excuse me?
I say, I know who you could talk to about that. Maybe that that's our presentation and we appreciate your time again.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to public comment then now. I have one person with their hand up. It's Lisa Bishop. Ms. Bishop, if you would go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Thank you. This is Lisa Bishop. I am a homeowner at 65 Fairfield Road. If you looked at some of the earlier slides that Greenwich Country Day presented, I am that one little chunk of land completely surrounded by Country Day. So this is a very important project to me. I did send you a letter yesterday around 3:30. I hope that you were able to read it, although it was quite lengthy. I feel like I'm a broken record here. From the very beginning, from our original meeting with Country Day in March of 2019, we have always said privacy and traffic were our big concerns. Nothing has been done about either issue. As Dan was talking about, they did include some plantings on the western side of our property, but this to us was, and we made clear, it was not related to this project. It was deferred maintenance from all the invasives coming down their stream and killing out all of our privacy trees. In any of the landscaping plans, there has been nothing added alongside our property on Cardinal Road. In fact.
Hold on just a second, Ms. Bishop. Can you throw that up, Pat? Because with the two for one tree replacement they're now proposing, I'm having trouble with how I've missed this that we're not addressing this issue. Oh, that's not the right trees. Oh, yeah. You were on the landscaping for Shake there. There's another one.
This shows the proposal with the trees removed and then what's I'm sorry. And then this is what's going away now. Is this not?
No, there should be one more that shows the other end of Cardinal Road where my property is located. It was a. It was a map like that.
There you go.
There you go. So this is their original previous plan, which was presented to ARC, which you see all those bright red dots where the trees are being removed on my property. When I pointed that out at the ARC meeting, there was a collective gasp from ARC in that 10 trees were being removed and none were being replanted. They have, along with the non-widening of Cardinal Road and the removal of the sidewalk on our request, because that relates to, to traffic issues that I'll get to, um, they did pull out that request to remove all those trees. But as you see, there is no plan to plant anything further. And I can tell you right now, the trees that are there are not as bushy and green as they seem right on that plan. So that, that was my privacy concern, um, but more so it's the traffic issues. Um, and, and I'm confused about what happened in that the, the, the scale of the bleachers are somewhat smaller, but not significantly smaller. Um, and, and we still see a traffic issue with even what, what we consider deferred maintenance or deferred security in that they have been allowing the public and Greenwich High School students to park in that existing lot in the 30-some spaces. We have asked repeatedly, since we actually have had the opportunity to meet with GCDS since the June ARC meeting, to please work with us to get a written agreement that they will not allow the public to park there. And it is exacerbated by the 40 extra, 45 extra spaces at the end of Cardinal Road. Um, we got a letter back from the school saying they will try, but their enforcement is basically using the neighbors as enforcement. And we can call them anytime someone has parked there or the lot is not chained. Um, to what you said, Mrs. Album, we, we, we don't want to get into the situation where neighbors are reporting violations. That's not an acceptable thing, then it must be an enforcement officer. In that also, we requested there's some way to, to manage the traffic at the end of the street with those 45 extra spaces. And there were some ideas brought up of like a breakaway fence or something like that, which the fire department was okay with according to some communications, but DPW did not initially like. And from that, we've heard nothing. So we have a, a very limited agreement to do anything with the 30 existing spaces and basically nothing for 45. We had also talked at one point about, uh, speed calming measures such as speed humps or such, because we do have people flying down this private road and, uh, causing concerns about the safety of pedestrians, including our small children. And like you said, Ms. Album, if you build it, they will come. And I do not see anything in this plan that says there will not be a, a very high traffic burden on this street. Um, in all the traffic management plans and such, the neighbors have not been consulted. Um, we were not consulted until after the June ARC meeting and, and we've not felt like any of our opinions have, have really made a difference. The concessions that were made were advantageous to Country Day. Um, and while we do appreciate them of, you know, not pulling down as many trees, not i- increasing the size of the existing parking lot, it still doesn't get to the end of our quality of life, our property values, and our peace of mind of trusting our neighbor as, you know, it, it, it doesn't lead us to, to feel comfortable with this plan. We are very concerned about this soft opening approach in that what is it that will trigger this next phase? Because of the trust that has been broken, we do not believe we will be included in this. And we feel like this is going to be something we will have to fight for years unless we just give up and let them do what they want. And this is, is very frustrating in that, um, you know, as, as I think Mr. Cohen mentioned, they've been using the fields for 50 years. They've been growing. These three private houses are all, that's what's standing between them and full use of their fields. And they had an opportunity to buy all three of them in the past five years. And so we feel like because of that, um, it, we, we no longer matter. And we are hoping that the commission can come up with some kind of plan that will help us in that. Um, we did notice in some of the plans, and I may be reading them wrong, the traffic management plan or something, that they indicated that they will have, uh, foot traffic and people coming down from the Old Church Campus. Um, if that truly is the plan, what is the need for 75 spaces on Cardinal Road? I also question why they need the shuttles? If these are traffic items that are, that are, are these events that are going to occur during spring and fall? Why they cannot walk down the, um, footbridge over Fairfield Road, except for obviously disabled and emergency vehicles? Um, this is something that would alleviate some of the traffic issues um, that would be caused by all these events.
Okay.
And then the other thing with traffic, and I believe in my letter, I hope you were able to see some of the pictures. This is non-GCDS use of fields. And I don't know how it's connected to GCDS, whether it's a staff or students, but it's not a GCDS team. And they are being allowed to use the fields whenever GCDS chooses to. And I don't believe any of this is included in the traffic studies. And, you know, this was a Sunday in the middle of summer during COVID and every space was taken and they were parking on my lawn. And this, along with the, uh, unwillingness to write a written agreement about traffic and enforce traffic and parking issues other than telling me I can call them about it. Um, it just makes me even more concerned that we're not talking just about the GCDS events that are on the schedule that Mr. Halstein presented, but a plethora of other things that could pop up any and all times. And, um, honestly, I was standing down there trying to figure out with neighbors and with some of the members of the GCDS, um, project team, and we were trying to figure out what team was using these fields. And a mother came up to us and said, what are you doing here? As I'm standing 10 feet off my property on a private road. And that just to me said everything about what is going to happen on this quiet road in the future. And we're just going to be shoved out. Our property value is going to be completely affected. Our privacy, our quality of life is just going to take a plummet.
Okay, okay, I think I've got your key points. I believe Mr. Canning took notes and I'm going to ask him to hold until we've heard from everybody, Ms. Bishop. Um, and we're going to ask them to address that. I see that they had seen your letter as well this afternoon and had given it, sent us a short response. Um, but I will, um, ask Daniel Offit, um, to speak now. He's the next person with his hand up. And, uh, but we're gonna hold and then Mr. Canning is going to reply, I think, his, and also about the landscaping, so on both grounds.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Offit? Go ahead. Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I'll be very brief.
It's a pleasure, sir.
Thank you. So I've been a member of the GCDS community, my wife and I, for 13 years. We live here in Greenwich on Houston Road. And, um, I'll say a couple of things. First, we've watched three building projects that Greenwich Country Day has done, actually all of them under the tutelage of Mr. Roddy. And they all have been done on time, on budget, with respect for the neighborhood. And actually, in my opinion, have enhanced the communities in which they were built, number one. Number two, I want to talk about the need for artificial turf to have a credible varsity athletic, uh, program. My 11th grade son, rising 11th grade son plays soccer and lacrosse. I've sat in the, um, with a chair on those fields and watched the games being played. Those fields cannot, um, support a varsity athletic program the way they are. I think a quarter of the games were canceled last year. Even if it's sunny outside, if it rained the day before, you simply can't play. We need artificial turf, the right kind of artificial turf down on those fields to allow us to have a credible, um, at a varsity athletic program. And I think Mr. Halstein has laid out a plan that would make that possible. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Joseph Bolt. Uh, Mr. Bolt, if you would go ahead.
Am I on now?
Yes, you are, Mr. Bolt. Hello.
Hello, and thank you, Madam Chairwoman and the rest of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, there are a couple of issues that I would like to address. Um, the first of which, I, I mean, for background, we have lived at the corner of Cardinal and Fairfield Road for 37 years. So we have some history here, know the neighborhood pretty well. Um, the Greenwich Skating Club, of which we have been a, a part for many, many years, uh, has been a wonderful neighbor as has Greenwich Country Day. Um, but over the years, whenever the skating club, uh, had plans to expand or, or do alterations, it always included input from the neighbors. Um, in the most recent expansion of the skating club did not, and I know this is not a skating club issue per se.
No, sir, if you would, if you would not, sir, because, um,
No, I understand, I understand, but I just, what, what I have to say is that the skating club owns 80% of Cardinal Road. And the, the parking plan that is being implemented here includes 30 spaces at the skating club.
Yes.
Oh, that is not part of the skating club charter. That was a club that was built for the sole purpose of skating. Now, I know over the years that Greenwich Country Day has had an arrangement with that. You have an agreement in that, and I realize that. But there has been some creep here and I think that this plan with respect to traffic, uh, represents, um, a pretty sizable overreach. Um, we have tried to be very understanding, um, but I think that the, 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 the use of Cardinal Road as a single path of ingress and egress to this facility is way, way, way beyond the pale. Um, my suggestion would be, and, uh, I would hope that you would consider it, is that the parking for this new facility, which I understand the need for, I understand the need for the turf fields and I'm, I, I'm, I'm in with that. Uh, if the, uh, parking plan would start with using the parking that is available, uh, at the Old Church Road and, and use that primarily, uh, and have spectators, whatever, except those who are handicapped or have special needs, could be bused down on a shuttle. But for spectators and the others, the walk down is not arduous. Uh, I will tell you that today in 92 degree heat, I, who am 75 years old, walked from the westernmost reach of the campus, right next to Old Church Road. I walked down to the middle of the proposed new fields and it took me exactly 10 minutes and 20 seconds and I wasn't even out of breath. It's not a big deal. So I don't think that would be too much to ask. That would eliminate the use of Cardinal Road. It would eliminate what is going to be horrible congestion at the nexus of Hillside, Cardinal, Fairfield and Stanwych. Uh, I think that the amount of traffic generated by 100 or close to 100 cars coming out of Cardinal Road during any times, uh, Mr. Canning mentioned light traffic, it's not light traffic between three and six. It could take easily an hour to empty out 100 or 110 cars from the parking lots during, during those times easily. And I think that's a safety issue and sure as heck is a quality of life issue for us on that corner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bolt. Our next speaker, speaker is Sergio Fuster. Uh, please go ahead, sir.
Sergio.
Sergio.
Sergio? Yes, hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Sergio.
Hi, hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. Gracias por la oportunidad. I'm the neighbor at 11 Cardinal Road. Si, soy especial. Thank you. Uh, I'm the neighbor at 11 Cardinal Road and just wanted to support the points made by, uh, Joe, uh, Bolt and Mrs. Bishop. I think the starting point is that to, today, the situation is not like at zero and we're trying to make it better. Traffic today and parking are already an issue that has not proven to be well managed by Greenwich Country Day School. And, you know, all these conversations about lighting candles and hoping that the plan is going to work obviously makes us very nervous, as everybody has been saying. I think the proposal of using as first, uh, choice of parking, the, the site at Old Church and then just using Cardinal as overflow of that is something that I would not understand why it's not reasonable. Because that will avoid just, uh, an ultra congestion of what is already a very complicated situation. That's totally out of control today, as we speak. Over the last weeks, we have dealt with all sorts of overparking issues and traffic.
Okay. Um, Mr. Fuster, you just went silent. Were you finished? Hello?
Yeah, we can go back and forth. It sounds really nice in paper. But as neighbor, uh, I have to say it feels very scary. Because we're gonna get into the issue and then we don't know how we're gonna walk back. So I will ask for any consideration for alternative parking plans before we even start.
Okay, so the biggest concern is the same one that Ms. Ms. Bishop raised is, and also Mr. Bolt, is about the use of the 30 spaces at the, at the ice rink?
Yeah, that and, and the traffic back and forth allocated to those, yeah.
To minimize the use of Cardinal Road to the extent possible. Okay, Mr. Canning is going to address those questions um, once everybody's finished. Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fuster, were you done?
Yeah, I just say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, our next speaker, um, if you would kindly, when I, um, say your name, is it just has John W. On, um, on your identification? Sir, John W? Hello? Okay, now we got you. Okay.
Good, thank you. My name's John Weiner. Uh, I'm a parent at Greenwich Country Day School. I have three kids, uh, who attend. Two are going to be at the high school and one at the middle school. Um, I, I, I agree with Mr. Fuster that, um, the previous speaker, that, that currently the traffic there is, is, uh, extremely chaotic. Um, I've been to many events on Car- Cardinal Road, whether through the skating club or at Greenwich Country Day and, um, at times it's taken me up to 20 minutes to leave. It's difficult to maneuver and, and other times I've had to park on Hillside. Um, I'm extremely excited about the, uh, parking and traffic, uh, traffic management plan, um, and, and the additional spaces. Um, and, and having the cul-de-sac at the end of the street, I think would be beneficial. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Vicki Craver. And ma'am, um, if you would go ahead. Ma'am, Vicki Craver? There you go.
Thank you for giving me a moment to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been a town resident for 19 years. Uh, I have an upper schooler and a middle schooler at Greenwich Country Day. Um, and I just, uh, really and truly believe that our community is strengthened by the schools and institutions that call Greenwich home. Um, this proposal clearly has had a lot of thought and work go into it. Um, it's a key piece of making Greenwich Country Day a competitive, independent co-ed high school. Um, and I would put forth that that's very good for the town. And I think this proposal with all of the, um, work that's gone into it is a great chance to get it right. Um, and to build an asset for future students and for the town. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Craver. Ms. Craver, the next person is Lars Forstberg. Uh, if you would go ahead, sir.
My, uh, comments mirror that of Lisa Bolt, excuse me, Lisa Bishop, Dr. Joseph Bolt and Sergio Dr. Joseph Bolt, and Sergio Foster.
I love it when people do that. Go ahead.
I am a, uh, an abutting neighbor. I live at the intersection of Cardinal and Fairfield. And my concerns mirror those I just mentioned. On enforcement and control traffic, uh, I am not inspired by the traffic plan that I've seen so far. And I would hope that, uh, Mr. Canning, when he comes back with his final report, will address those two particular, uh, issues, enforcement and control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the next speaker is Linda. And ma'am, um, if you would kindly, when you come in, if you would kindly give us, uh, your last name. Ma'am, Linda? There you go.
Steve and Linda Miller, so this is Steve Miller. How are you?
Hello, okay.
I'm also a, a Hillside resident. And in addition to the traffic concerns I'm hearing about the intersection, I'm certainly a bit concerned about events that conflict with the high school.
Yes.
Be of the neighborhood in holistic manner.
Yes, we did actually, uh, Mr. Canning is nodding. This was the first thing we said, the first time we heard the application. I think he's gonna give you the answer to that one, because it was the, um, we've got a couple of people on the commission who went to the high school, and they were very aware of this issue. So, yes, sir, if you'd go to the next issue.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the other thing is, I, I hear about, you know, hiring private duty police. With all due respect to our police, is I've been told by the police that have been hired at private duty at Greenwich High School, they basically represent the people they're hired by. They're not necessarily serving as the typical excellent public servants. They usually represent when they're on duty as police officers. And been told very often that what I think is a neighbor, or what I might want to do as a neighbor, is not important that they're to enforce those that have hired them. And so I'm quite concerned about how that may occur at this site as well. Um, the other part of it is the intersection at Hillside and Fairfield is already quite treacherous. People don't observe the crosswalk. There's absolutely no enforcement of the crosswalk. Uh, when landscape trucks are parked at the side, there's no enforcement of that. And to try and cross it as you're walking your dog or just going out for daily walk is already incredibly dangerous. And to increase the traffic by even so few as eighty-four cars, which frankly, I am skeptical about, because I've seen how many cars were supposed to show up at the high school during different studies and.
Yes.
Um, concerns me. And the last part is enforcement and consequences. You know, when MISA was built, many things were promised and many things were not fulfilled. And there are no consequences. And so I hear the same thing here and share the similar concern. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Our next speaker's, um, only got the name Knox, so kindly identify yourself. Uh, it says K-N-O-X on the identification. Uh, we need to know who you are for the record.
I'm mute. Sorry, I was trying to, I'm going to, yes, hi, my name is Ann Knox. I live at thirty Brookridge Drive, which is around the corner from, uh, the current construction that is being proposed. Um, very close to the corner of Fairfield Road. Um, I and many of the neighbors on Hillside and Brookridge are definitely impacted by the current situation with respect to, um, the development and redevelopment of the high school, potential rezoning of the high school, and certainly the traffic issues relating from GCDS and Cardinal Road. We are in a neighborhood that is a rarity in town with respect to having RA1 zoning. And we are pretty much under attack here with respect to the current usages. The town cannot make up its mind whether it wants redevelopment or it wishes for historic preservation. I would note that both this redevelopment and the high school rezoning is not part of the nineteen, twenty nineteen plan of conservation, um, nor is, uh, you know, some of, some of the uses that are being requested. We also note that, for example, P&amp;Z had previously approved, and obviously I think there were wetlands issues with Mulberry Crossing, that was on Post Road, um, adjacent to my block. Um, that was approved originally as part of the historical overlay. It seems very incongruous that we have a historical preservation situation going on in the exact same region, where we are now deciding that we want to have, you know, changes to zoning, changes to traffic, um, additional redevelopment. So I think P&amp;Z really needs to make up its mind whether they want to preserve this neighborhood or wish, we wish to redevelop this neighborhood. I'm a bit concerned that the neighbors of Hillside and Brookridge have not really been notified with respect to the changes that are being provided to GCDS. I am further concerned that, for example, there has been no meeting with the general neighbors in the neighborhood before it coming, uh, before the commission. I know Mrs. Bishop has expressed that, as, as has Mr. Bolt. But in general, the Cardinal, Hut, Hillside and Brookridge neighbors are bearing the brunt of the traffic situation that, uh, starts at the high school and stops at Country Day. Um, I would note that if any of the parents who spoke from GCDS are willing to move to Cardinal Road, Hillside or Brookridge, I think that it would make more sense for them to have the same positions that they do, because they are not currently in, currently impacted. But I would expect that it would change their minds with respect to the ability to get out of your driveway during peak hours, with respect to the issues relating to, um, traffic and non, and usage, particularly of Cardinal Road with respect to, uh, high schools village. I will note that the Bishop's house and my house have been here for over a hundred years. And even in pandemic, we have seen kids in SUVs zoom, zooming down Cardinal Road with no impact or no monitoring from GCDS.
Looks like we need speed bumps.
Right, absolutely. Additionally, we have all this.
We need speed bumps in the entire world, but nobody agrees. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I would be happy to have a speed bump in front of my house.
Go ahead, ma'am.
On record. However, what I will say is we have people zooming down and hanging out and illegal activity occurring. To be honest, you can smell it, okay?
Well, ma'am, 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 I can't address that. That's not a land use matter. If you see something that you wish to report, that's an illegal activity, you call Greenwich Police, you call the non-emergency number and just report it, and they will send out a patrol car. But we, you can't, we can't police that.
I understand, I understand, but what I am saying is that you can require Greenwich Country Day to potentially enter into an agreement with the neighbors with respect to the uses that are permitted, and that non-Grenwich Country Day uses are not permitted. There is a concern here. I mean, you, you, you all have been, um, very active with respect to recent concerns relating to a potential baseball field elsewhere in Greenwich on private property and concerns with respect to working it out with the neighbors. I think it would be very helpful with respect to the neighbors on Hillside, Brookridge, and Cardinal, um, and Fairfield as well, if Greenwich Country Day would have come to the neighbors in the first instance to discuss their plans, which they really had not. I will note that, for example, Milbrook Crossing came to the neighbors initially with the plans that they had before going through some of the approval processes. So there is some concern that in addition to, you know, this issue, we also have the concern of the traffic studies on Hillside. And the fact that those traffic studies took many years to, to start, complete, et cetera, and they don't take into account these additional uses that are in close proximity to Hillside Avenue. So we would ask that you please, in thinking about this project and concerns relating to this project, um, think about whether there are alternative ways or alternative routes outside of Cardinal Road with respect to, um, vehicles that are not emergency use or not used for particular, just use of busing and busing teams in and out. Um, and I think that is all I have to say, and very much respect this commission. I, I think you guys have been doing a wonderful job asking about the plans and trying to figure out how to preserve privacy and preserve, um, use for our town. But I ask that you really think about this particular use as part of the whole, not just the particular use that GCDS is requesting.
No, ma'am, we are doing that. Um, thank you very much.
Uh, Mrs. Avalon, before we move on.
I'm sorry, we've only got one more speaker. Could we finish that?
I know, but I want, I want to make sure I've got this correctly. Uh, Mrs. DeLuca, uh, it's my understanding the Milbrook Crossing, uh, fell to, uh, at Wellens, is that correct?
That's correct. That project is not, not active.
Yeah, we, we never saw that.
No, we did not. So it's irrelevant to this discussion.
Okay. Uh, and that, uh, I think actually just to make sure that everybody understands that the rezoning of, uh, the Greenwich High School property, uh, was withdrawn.
Uh, they're aware of that. We announced it tonight, and all these people have been here the whole time.
Uh-huh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next person is Dave Kromloff. And Mr. Kromloff, if you would go ahead.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, my name's David Kromloff. I am the current facilities director at Greenwich Country Day School, and I also live at twenty-one Cardinal Road, the house at the end of the, the road here. Uh, what I'd like to say is, I do believe with the new parking that we were planning on adding and the roundabout at the end of the road, that will dramatically make the traffic better on the road. And I'd like to say, for the past eleven years, we've been working on making the traffic better on the street. Um, I do police the street myself pretty much every day and every night that I'm here at my house. Um, and I thank you very much for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kromloff. Okay, um, so it's getting really late, you guys, and we still have a, an agenda ahead of us. Um, this has been very slow tonight. I think, um, um, Mr. Cohen, no, but before you guys answer the, answer some of these comments, um, uh, Ms. Knox said that the commission could make up its mind, and that's actually not true. The commission has to, on each application we see, we have to balance whether the development keeps Greenwich vibrant or whether protection of the existing community is more important, whether furthering education facilities is more important to Greenwich at the moment. We have to strike a balance every time we see an application. And it's not about being schizophrenic, it's about striking that balance on an ongoing basis. And it's very difficult, because the demand for development is constant, and we are blessed by that in a way. Uh, because it's what keeps Greenwich strong, but at the same time, we have to manage it so that it doesn't overwhelm us, and it does feel, I know, like it can overwhelm us. Now, I, uh, one of the complaints that we heard tonight from the public was that, um, the neighbors had not been noticed. My application had copies of notices to all the abutting neighbors. So, um, we've covered this before, that it does go out. The agendas are on the website. I'm not sure what else we can do. And, um, the uses, okay, educational uses are allowed in a residential zone, and they come in for a special permit, and that's what we're doing here. Okay, so Mr. Cohen and Mr. Canning. Mr. Canning's got them, oh, the landscaping thing, can we address that quickly? Ms. Ms. Bishop's comment that she would like more screening?
Uh, Dan, can you respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is Dan Krober. I'll be very quick. Um, so I will say, after, um, the, the first ARC meeting in June, um, we had two meetings on site, um, with the bishops, um, uh, with the busters, um, at one of them. I specifically had one of my landscape architects go out to the site, uh, to walk the site. And that's where, you know, frankly, when we looked at the, the width of the road and the potential impacts there, that we agreed, um, that we needed to scale back. Um, one thing I could say, while, um, the right-of-way, um, appears like, you know, that, as you know, with all right-of-ways, there's a private right-of-way that's a certain width. And the edge of the road, the road itself, and then the edge of the road where it's on, is actually the private right-of-way. So there were some trees being removed, um, within Cardinal Road right-of-way, the private right-of-way. But the majority of those trees were in that private right-of-way, that, that the Greenwich Skating Club, um, actually owned. So I just wanted to clarify that, that those weren't all trees on the Bishop's property. That being said, when we walked on site, um, we walked, you know, on site with our landscape architect to figure out if there was a way to bolster, um, the screening, uh, plan. And quite frankly, we had a fairly open conversation about what can we do to make this more palatable for you? And that was the, that was why our landscape architect was there. And there was nothing asked, um, by, by the bishops to, to add additional screening. Uh, we went there with that sole purpose to figure out how we specifically could bolster the screening there. Um, we talked about the trees that would be saved, and as you saw from the pictures earlier, it's basically a grass shoulder that's maybe five feet wide, then there's ledge. There really isn't much of an opportunity to plant there, uh, but, but we certainly, uh, tried to do that.
But you're taking some trees down, and they're not being replaced, and there are trees there that are, um, her point was not clear how there's not an opportunity, because there are trees there now. I'm blanking on the name. It's not a thujja, it's not an arborvitae, but there is uh, native screening that gets, it's got the pointy leaves and it's evergreen, and it gets to be about, I think about eight feet tall. So it would work for you as an under canopy with the remaining trees. If you could look at that for when you come back next Tuesday and give us something on that, and then we can turn to Mr. Canning.
And you're saying.
I'm asking you specifically, I'm asking you specifically, they've got, can you resolve that so that where you are removing trees and not replacing them, those trees that you are removing, can you add, if there's room for the trees and you are the ones removing them, there's room for you to put some screening in? And what you.
So just to be clear, we removed all the trees. We are not removing any trees along the Bishop's property, the Foster's property.
That.
No tree removal.
Okay, so the trees. The trees that are shown as being removed, um, Patrick, can you put that up?
Yeah, that was the old, that was the old plan, and it, then you'll look at the new, this is the new plan. You'll see there's no red dots. We're removing zero trees. We're actually adding trees. If you go back one, you'll see.
So, Ms. Bishop was not realizing that is in this now, you are no longer, the ARC gasp that she mentioned was when they looked at the previous plan.
Correct.
These red trees here are no longer being removed, so Ms. Bishop does not need to be concerned about losing her screening, correct?
Yes. Apologies.
Okay, I'm good. I'm good. Let's go to Mr. Canning then. Mr. Canning, your show. But you have to unmute. Okay.
You're right.
Mr. Canning, unmute, please. There you go, you're good.
Pardon me. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Canning, um, this, the, the, the skating, the thirty and the forty-five spaces, did you all consider speed bumps? Um, the issue of using the old church parking first. And you don't have to address this tonight. I would be really happy if you said you would address it next week. Go ahead, unless you can address it quickly, and you'll have lots of good answers.
Well, I mean, um, to, to me, it, it's relatively simple. The facility, the fields are there, that right now they're being used by the middle school for practices and games, for practices, the kids walk there for games, the parents and grandparents show up. Uh, they're being used by junior high students, uh, and they get bussed there. So this is a concession that the school has made, uh, and they're bussed back for practices. And then for the games, the parents and grandparents show up. And as we enter into the next year and the year after that, there will be, uh, varsity games. So the, uh, the use is going up a little bit. The school had envisioned and anticipated a need for a hundred and six parking spaces. So they were going to add, uh, something like seventy odd parking spaces, more than seventy parking spaces. They've decided that, in the short term at least, and hopefully longer, but we're going to monitor it, that they can scale back. So instead of adding seventy parking spaces, they're adding forty-three. Uh, and, uh, this will service the field's needs for most games. It's an issue of convenience and enjoyment. It's an easy ten minutes walk down from the lower campus. It's not such an easy walk up. So for most games, and, and this is basically a typical engineering design. We don't design shopping mall parking lots for the day after Thanksgiving. We design them for the thirtieth highest hour so that we can use them most of the time, where we don't waste our resources all of the time. So the goal is to provide enough parking for the fields so they can be used most of the time conveniently. But when it's busy, um, and they have a lot of games or they have, uh, championships, then they'll take the traffic and put it up on the, on the upper field.
They're complaining to you about existing conditions. That's the hassle.
Well, well, so part of the existing conditions will be improved by the.
Um, hold on just a second, Mr. Canning. I'm sorry to the public, if you want to say something, um, we'll have public comment next week. But for now, everybody's spoken once, um, we're, we're gonna, please come back next week. Go ahead, Mr. So please don't raise your hands right now. You can come back and just take notes, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Canning, you can finish.
Part, part of the issue is that the, instead of having people park, uh, pointing the wrong way on the street and then trying to turn around and everybody trying to come in and out with, um, that designed parking, people will be able to drive in, park, then back out and leave. So it will be, uh, a smoother operating, more efficient. Um, I believe that the school would be. I believe that the school would be willing to install speed humps on Cardinal Road if on their portion of it and on the southern portion of it, if they can get permission from Greenwich Skating Club. I would expect that it would probably not be as big an issue for town emergency services because it's not a thoroughfare. That's usually where the concern is. Trying to make sure I get all of the the enforcement and control and and the scheduling. So part of our event management plan is at the start of the year, you put your schedule together and the plan requires that you that you coordinate with Greenwich High School and with Greenwich Central Middle School to make sure that nobody's got a ton of games or big games on the same day. And if there's an issue, then the plan requires that the school will reschedule. And if you do that at the start of the year, you can usually figure it out and work it out. So that's one part. The second part is that we're required by the plan to monitor it and to report it to the to the town. And if there are problems, which I'm sure the neighbors will inform the town, but we're self obligated to report them. And then to come up with measures to find out what the issue was and how to fix it. Part of the issue is probably if we had, if we allowed, if we anticipated that there would be, let's say 100 cars there and there were 120 cars there. So it was it was poor planning for that number of events and type of events and you can correct that sort of thing.
So could I make a suggestion to you guys? Because the evening is running late and you guys could leave and still get a good night's sleep. Could, do you think you could manage, somebody could manage to talk with the neighbors before we see you again next week? And when you develop that list of things you're going to look at that to make sure that this is not further imposing on the community, that it include the things that are key to them. So what the neighbors are telling you is traffic's going too fast on Cardinal. It's already too intense on Cardinal. There's they're worried about all of that. What, when are they seeing the traffic? What are that get their key concerns and we're going to put that into when we do a look back? And that's what's that's what's key to manage is the impact on the neighborhood.
Okay.
And that's what's key in a special permit. By the way.
I think we've heard heard their key concerns tonight. And I'm sure that John will refer to them in his response to us.
Perfect.
You will submit before next week.
But
I'm not sure that another another meeting with the neighbors necessarily is
They're asking. They have asked to talk to you. It would be great if you could do some outreach. I know Mr. Rhodey is well known for all the outreach he does and maybe he'd be willing to do some more outreach this week. If you guys have time, it would be great. They're asking to talk to you. They're asking about their concerns. Obviously, Mr. Canning, you can address it just with us. And the issue is, how do you make sure that we are protecting them? Because that is what we have to do with the special permit approval.
Ms. Alvin will do exactly as you suggest, but
Thank you very much.
We haven't met with the neighbors. We met with the neighbors several
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll
Before we move on, I have two things for Mr. Cohen. Please address. When you return, there was the there was a discussion about a gate across Cardinal Road with engineering. And I don't believe I'll be able to find it on the plans. So when you come back, when you
Good, good, good.
Can I can I address that, Mr. Mackright? Because I appreciate you raising it. The we would like to address one concern that the neighbors have told us about, which is that people just coming into the the road to rest because it's a nice place to stop and have a cigarette or whatever they do. And one of the things that we would like to do is gate off the new parking lot at the end of the at the end of the road. The fire department has no problem with that. They can get in if we put the right guy to lock on. DB Avenue doesn't like it. We're going to try to work it out, but we would certainly like your support in being able to provide that security.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Mackright, what was the next item you wanted?
Yes, Mr. Cohen, if if when you return, can you address the non seat, non country day school entities using the fields? It's one of those things. We've talked a lot about how country days using the fields, the management plans, parking, so on and so forth. But are they actually opening the fields up to other other entities using them? If you can address that when you return.
Well, actually, and bear in mind that it's very likely going to be a condition that you not do so.
My understanding is that any other group that uses the field has a connection with the school through students and and teachers. So I can get to the answer.
I think what we would ask you is given the concerns of the traffic, is that no use that is not directly country day at this point be allowed during the soft, the quote, soft opening. It just stops.
Ms. Alvin, this is Adam Rhodey again.
Yes, sir.
Happy to take that on. We're happy to take that under advisement. I will tell you in our role of being a good neighbor in the community, we allow the Boys and Girls Club to use our fields. We allow the the kids program at the YMCA, all gratis with no no rental fees. And you'll be shutting that down with said commandment from the from the
You're gonna have to make a choice. You either want to grow your school and keep your neighbors.
Fair enough.
I mean, you know, I can't, it's an imposition. Maybe Katie can help you work it out between now and next week. She maybe she can come up with an idea. Maybe you can find an off peak time that is in agreement to everybody. But I think when you're intensifying the use on site and you're doing discretionary things, ooh, it's a tough one.
Understood. Just know those those, all of these things are happening, right? They've been happening for years.
But you're adding to the site now.
Correct. And and we could, again, add to the site without any of these changes. I think all these changes are providing better management of the area, better flow of traffic, a cleaner site, a safer site. So everything we're doing here is is making it better, not worse.
So then one of the things we could do, I'm just throwing out conditions that could exist, okay? Because obviously, we have to do that next week. But one of the things could be that when we do the look back the first year, that may be when you have to make the call on whether the discretionary uses are making sense because you might have to reduce activity. And in that case, maybe you have to reduce the off, the the non-country day participation.
Fair enough.
That's that's a good idea.
Something that works for the neighbors. Okey doke. Y'all come back soon now.
Thank you.
Here. Bye bye.
Okey dokey. So you're doing, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, I was trying to get you home to bed or you're already home, but
I'm home and I'm very close to bed.
Okey dokey. Now, so our next application is the Greenwich Country Club for a final site plan and special permit for the renovation of the tennis pro shop. It's an addition of 994 square net square feet. And Mr. Cohen, if you would like to make any brief statement in that regard.
Very brief. Pat, can you bring up the first image?
I think we've all seen.
Katie? Me, buddy?
Yeah. Patrick?
I can't do the screen.
Well, we've all seen it. I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, we've all seen it, honestly. I mean, we're nice. We're nice and we see the presentation over again, but we have, we do do our homework.
Oh, I know you do. The first image I wanted to show was this.
Okay.
Which shows where the the proposed addition is to be made. Basically, it's an addition to their existing tennis, yeah, this this the top one.
Okay, yes. Reducing the basement.
Which is a part of the immediately adjacent to the main clubhouse, all of which is located in the center part of the campus, 140 odd acres of of club. The proposals are to renovate the existing pro shop building, including a new attached covered patio to construct a small storage shed adjacent to their existing maintenance garage and to renovate an outdoor patio next to the squash building on the other side of the clubhouse by resurfacing. You mentioned to Mrs. Alvin, there was an increase of about 900 square feet in the tennis building. That increase is actually an outdoor patio. But because, there you go, but because of the width of the supporting columns, the zoning enforcement officer includes that area within FAR. So again, here's this image shows the front access to the clubhouse with the tennis work being done to the left and the squash building to the right. If you would like to hear more about this from the project architect, David Woods is here with me tonight to talk about it.
As I recall, you were before ARC and you you're all set with them.
We are all set, yes.
Yes, I don't think we, I think as discussed earlier tonight, once ARC has given us a sign off, we are avoiding delving into their architectural review. That's pretty ugly. Okay, do I have any
We're gonna fix it.
Yeah. I just hadn't focused on it in so big. Okay, so does anybody from the commission have any questions on this item?
No, thank you.
No.
Do I have? Yes, Mr. Low.
I said no.
Oh, okay. Do I have any questions from the public? Anybody in the public, please raise your virtual hand. No, okay. Mr. Cohen, I guess you don't have any further comment. Is everybody okay with closing this item?
Yes.
We have all the reviewers, right, Nick? I don't remember anything outstanding.
Yes, I believe we have zoning, we have engineering, we have sewer, we have conservation at ARC.
Yeah, that's I just wanted someone to tell me I wasn't tired. Okay, Mr. Hardman, I see you. I know, I feel the same way. A little tired. Okay, so we're going to close this item. Anybody object? Please raise your hand. No. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. Our next application is 2269 Palmer Hill Road. This is for an application for a final resub. And this is 11 square feet, as I remember, between 18 Hillcrest and 16 Hillcrest. And who's doing the presentation?
I guess.
Chris Bristol is there? Is that him?
No, it was it was Mr. Haslin or somebody from Rocco DiAndrea's office.
Neither one of them is there. Okay, we're going to move on unless somebody
Well, if someone's here to present, please raise your hand.
Okay, we can decide this. We're gonna, what do you do? The applicant's not here. Do we just, we can't close it without them. So we'll leave it open and we'll just close it next time.
Can we close it without them, Katie?
No.
No, this is the resubdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pat, who is the applicant supposed to be?
Haslin or DiAndrea?
DiAndrea filed it, but I don't chip was spearheading most of it.
And they're not there, so we'll leave it open. We'll we'll handle it at the next meeting. Okey doke, our next application. And there I hope it's the last one for the night and then we just have the decisions. David and Victoria Yolen for a zoning text amendment. And I think that is Mr. Tessie, perhaps? Mr. Tessie? Oh, did we move him up and down? John T.
Drop it.
He's here.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey, thank you. As you everyone knows, I had made a presentation with my clients. I'm not sure they're still awake.
Well, they're here.
Good, good, good. Okay.
I see Mr. Yolen.
Mr. Yolen is.
Okay.
Gave a very nice
So Mr. Tessie, when we last spoke,
Yes.
we left you with the possibility of getting an HO. And when you came back, you've broadened the text amendment to apply to office as well. But I thought we had left it at the HO possibility.
Not at all. It was very clear.
Okay.
And
Katie?
I'm just I'm kind of disappointed that Mr. that Fox is not here attending this evening.
He's probably hiding from you.
Because is he supposed to be here?
No, he has a family. I'm sorry, sir.
Comments yourself.
Yes, I did.
Okay, relating to the concept of expanding
Yes.
second floor uses under under what Mr. Fox essentially combined a concept whereby if the parking of the particular proposed alternate alternate use such as office did not exceed that of retail, which is basically one parking space for every 150 square feet, square feet, usable square feet, that that should be considered and allowed alternate use conceptually. And you all had input on that subject. It's unfortunate that I am again put on at a very late hour after you had a number of items requiring a lot of thought and concentration.
No, we're we're all, we are hard, we belong to you entirely right now.
So I dutifully tried to craft a document that accomplished that goal, which I thought made a heck of a lot of sense universally, but was not, is not why I'm really here. I'm here representing a client on a more narrow issue. However, in thinking about it and in talking to a number of people, both tenants and building owners over the last few weeks, became apparent that this is a matter that should be taken very seriously by the commission.
Yes, sure.
I appreciated the comments of Mr. Levy yesterday during your briefing session. I felt the kind, I felt that the issue, and it relates to specifically my client's issue too with regard to their building and their tenant on the second floor of impact on the retail was taken to a a very, I would call a narrow extreme and solely related to the utilization of parking spaces, the feeding of meters by office workers. And comments by some retailers, rightfully so, about a concern about parking. However, I thought that Mr. Levy was was right on point again. When gotten through the discussion of, well, what's the problem with this application going forward and let's try it? You've stated on more than one occasion, Madam Chairman, that Greenwich Greenwich Avenue is hurting. And it's hurting because there aren't enough customers out there. So it's a kind of incongruent to talk about, well, we're concerned about parking spaces not being available at the same time that they're talking about the fact that they all need more customers. The truth of the matter is, and it was born out at the bottom of the avenue with the closure of a number of parking spaces, that people, if they want to go to a location, they find a place to park. Now, I'll make this additional point on that subject that when it comes to the idea of workers feeding meters, we have many, many, many retail workers. And the logic for them perhaps feed the meter on occasions probably greater than second floor users, particularly office workers who will tend to be there all day. And what they do offer is that by being there all day, they become customers of your restaurants and of your retail stores. So I just have to beg to differ on the subject of negative impact of office workers to Greenwich Avenue. And I again think that there's, if you look at the facts, if you look at the empirical data, you're going to find that the more people that any use can bring to the avenue would be a welcome at the end of the day by the retailers. Now, in so far, in general, because if you just want, again, want to look at and take it to an extreme of, well, suppose somebody is successful. That question came up and Mr. Levy's comments were more or less, well, why is that bad? And that's the problem we have on this second floor. Retailers will not go there. Those that try to go there do not survive. They don't survive. I was talking to John Ferrari, as you know, client of mine. He has a number of buildings on Greenwich Avenue. They don't survive. I was talking to John Ferrari, as you know, client of mine, he has a number of buildings on Greenwich Avenue. And he has the two extremes. When talked, he has the major traffic and parking impact around the avenue is Apple. Now, are other retailers gonna criticize Apple for bringing so much customers, many, to the avenue, so many customers to the avenue? And taking up all those parking spaces and maybe they don't want to go to Richards or they don't wish to go buy a newspaper? Or a lady's dress or a woman's, man's tuxedo? Maybe they will, because it's all about a deep concern about the unknown and how do I approve without hurting myself? Retailers notoriously fight, we see it all the time, the idea that a competitor is gonna come into the neighborhood. They don't want a competitor either. But it's gotta be for the common good, not for the isolated few. And for the common good, I really think you have to look deeper into that second floor utilization. As always, digressing to what I was saying about John, he has Apple. And he has a beautiful building on the corner of Railroad Avenue and Greenwich Avenue. Right, where, where we have a bank that now merged with People's Banks and now we have an empty bank there. On the second floor, John, for three years, has been trying to rent that second floor out for retail utilization. What we're really seeing on, on the second floor over the last few years is, is a non-retail type of use. Usually a nail salon, a barber shop, there are now two barber shops on the avenue. And ironically, those are allowed uses which, which generate a fair amount of traffic. When I say traffic, I'm talking about parking and traffic, which is fine, that's how they have to survive, but they have a number of employees. Who are working and you have customers sitting in those seats and also in a waiting area. But that's not bad, that is good for the area. That's what you need to do, you need a second floor utilization of this, on this town's main street. That's going to foster utilization and participation. With the total intent on the avenue of being on that ground floor. Going to our restaurants and visiting our various shops. So I just wanted to really emphasize that in general. Because I don't think it should be lost. I took seriously what you all were saying, not on a universal basis, but certainly a number of you. That let's take a second look on that sec, at that, on that second floor utilization. And let's see if something makes sense now when we're fighting tooth and nail to get people onto the avenue to support our retailers.
Yeah, Mr. Tessie, to what extent are your views of the Greenwich Avenue retail colored by the current COVID crisis?
I, I.
Because this is where.
Sure, I'll be happy to, yeah.
Presumably, we're not gonna be in this forever.
Well, interestingly, Katie DeLuca and I have been discussing for how many years, Katie? The issue, the issue of second floor office and second floor utilization. It's just Mr. Lo been in known fact that it's been problematic pre-COVID, COVID, it just has. This may, may have exacerbated it certainly, but we do have an issue. And I think those property owners, especially the, you know, the small prop, the small property owners. In terms of having one, say, one building such as the Yolans. Do suffer with, do suffer and that's what led them to engage me to try to help them out with this one tenant. Because it's been so difficult for them to keep tenants on that second floor and they rely upon that income. Their first floor tenant isn't doing so great either retailer right now, they have to work with that tenant. So they're, they're frustrated and we have, you know, the, these are people that have owned these buildings and kept them in their families, which is pretty great for you. And they face the reality of a, of a difficult marketplace. Because in general and specifically, of course, of course now, but you know, we don't know when this, when this is unfortunately going to end. And, and, but I don't see, knowing what I know about the avenue and we all do, I, I don't see where it matters. Whether it's COVID or non-COVID, we're gonna continue to have a problem on the avenue just by the, on the second floor utilization. Just by the way people shop today irrespective of COVID. I really believe that, obviously, people can take a second look, but we really know the second floor has been problematic. And we've had issues on the avenue itself on the first floor the last few years and keeping those stores full. So what's more important? I think the most important element is, we talked about that and I believe I've had some off the record, I'll say off the record, having nothing to do with this application, historic app. You know, conversations with, with, with probably a number of you on the commission. And about what do we do to keep the, keep the avenue vibrant? And I always said it was alternate uses and it's creative uses to bring people there. I mean, I'm heartened to go down the avenue, it makes me feel old now in these restaurants because everybody looks so young, but they're there. People will, will come out. It's still not hardly a lost cause, but we don't want to let it get away from us, we really don't. And I think this is, this is a situation here where you, you can be proactive without putting yourself at extreme risk. Or extreme criticism, and I know there's always a concern about that, about neighborhoods. I don't think you're gonna see that here. This downtown is gonna have to become more and more of a hub. For all the right reasons over these next few years and there's gonna be a lot of planning decisions I know you're gonna have to make and they're gonna be tougher ones. But I think the greater good is to focus really on the downtown and keeping it vibrant and strong.
Would anybody like to make any comments on the proposal questions for Mr. Tessie? Victoria, you need to unmute if you're gonna say something.
Mr. Tessie, you haven't addressed the parking issue, could you go there, please?
Try to turn up my sound, one second.
Oh, we can hear you fine.
I couldn't hear her.
She wanted you to address the parking issue.
Well, I thought I did address the quote, when we say the parking issue. They were, if we're talking about your comments yesterday. There were comments about this concern about employees of second floor uses. Quote, feeding the meter, that that was the issue. And as I stated earlier, I, it's interesting, but let's take a step back. Because in the context of what you were talking about yesterday, you totally lost sight of the fact that no matter whether. If a retail use were, if you could find a retailer to use the second floor or if use another, another type of permitted use such as a barber shop or a salon. They actually have more employees and more customers than office workers by far. And office workers tend to stay in their spaces all day. And it seems to me that you're not gonna get feeding of the meters. I, I, I think that's a red herring issue.
No, it's not, sir.
No, let me finish.
Okay, but I don't think that's what Victoria is asking you. We know people feed the meters, we've talked to them.
No, that's not the point. I'm saying they're not going, I'm saying the issue is not their feeding of the meters. You're gonna get more office workers who are not gonna do that. Number one, number two, if you're really so concerned about it, you have a bunch of junior parking officers and the retail stores who will notice that and certainly can tell the parking officials. I think it's a red herring issue because you're, my point is that you have other allowed uses, whether it's retail salons, barber shops. One-on-one training who have as many, if not more, parking spaces needed for their employees and their operations. In offices or, or any similar uses, okay? And that's what I was saying about your conversation in that regard was very narrow. And not fully contextual because it was just left to that without comparing it to the uses that would alternately be there. And require parking spaces, whether they're fed or not fed.
Okay, so I want to ask Katie a question. Over time, Katie, you and I have talked a lot about. How we write piecemeal, we write, we write regulation changes for specific application issues. And if you go through our regulations and we're not the only town who does this, I see them in other towns when I read their regs. It's like, there's this teensy weensy little thing that was done just to accommodate one applicant. And that's one of the things that was bothering me as I read this. Cause I, I was originally thinking it was gonna come in as an HO, so. Cause that's where we, I thought we had completely ended the conversation as that was the magic answer because we haven't finished the commercial business zone study. And we wanted to finish that before we address this, so at the bitter end that night, we said to you, consider an HO, because that'll get us out of the bind. But Katie, what I feel like is that this was, this is still a piecemeal fix. We're not finishing our study, we don't have all the recommendations, we don't know all the issues. And we're going in and we're fixing something just because there is an applicant who has an illegal use right now in their building. So can you help me think that through? Cause that's where I've been stuck.
Part of the problem with the HO was that when the commission has done HOs in the past on the avenue. We have discussed a more global solution to why we've done the HOs in the first, in the first place. Because what we didn't want to have or what, you know, if you take it to the next logical step, then everybody would just do an HO and that seems silly. You know, at some point, so we have always talked about, about doing some more holistic solutions. So the first, the part of these things though is there's a finite amount of parking and there's a mismanagement of the parking. Or not, let me put it a better way, is that there's not an efficient management system.
Efficient, it's not efficient utilization for who the client is.
Chief Marino, who's now in charge of that, has made leaps and bounds compared to where we've been in the past. And he's already started to allocate lots for employees only. The thing that concerns me most about this application, because I do understand the applicant in terms of. The allowable uses now theoretically should not have, there's, there's no more parking demand than what he's proposing. So theoretically, it should all be hunky dory, but the problem is though, what I would like to get a better understanding of, and I think this is where Mrs. Goss was going. What I want to get a better is, there's a difference between how people park for retail than there is how people park for office and certainly how they park for medical office. Actually, medical office and retail would be, would be more similar actually, because it's, it's in and out more during the day. And it concerns me a lot that how, how are we going to again have an efficient management of parking for these, for the second floor uses? Historically, the office uses up there have been, you know, kind of sleepy office uses where. It's the one person who has kind of a private enterprise type of thing and comes in a couple of days, whatever, whatever it is. So you can see how regulation like this left uncontrolled could end up with people combining spaces on the second floor. Having big office operations up there and, you know, we, I know we've talked about things like Betteridge in the past where they had seventy employees, if you remember, I mean, that's.
On their online store, of course.
Yeah, their, their, you know, their little retail space was nothing. And then upstairs and you've got tons of jewelry makers up there and so what they have made, so what happens on the avenue is people work it out. And they work it out where like two hundred Greenwich Avenue is an example, there's a lot of vacancy in the parking garage there. And so two hundred Greenwich Avenue does rent to Saks Fifth Avenue, used to rent to Betteridge, rents to some of the residences in the area. So, so it just kind of works itself out and there's a bit of a self-management. But when you talk to the business owners and the property owners on the avenue, their main concern is that the shoppers feel that there's nowhere to park and therefore they don't come, which I get is a bit of a Yogi Bearism. But it's, it's a real problem. And so without the management that goes along with these proposed uses. You know, you, you just worry that, that you're upsetting the ecosystem down there.
And I still feel, spot zoning isn't quite the right word, because now, Mr. Tessie, I mean, it's something that goes, you know, that's the entire zone. But it's a Band-Aid. We're still in the Band-Aid world without finishing the commercial business study. We're still just applying a Band-Aid because there's a specific applicant that needs something. So now the Band-Aid's a little broader and a little better. But it's still, so that's the other thing, Katie, can you help us think that through?
I would like to respond to that, please.
Okay, Katie.
Let me, okay, because as I said, I went down a road that we, we left off, I would do. That is, and I proposed a language to Katie.
Okay.
The idea of HO, I rejected, so let's be clear about it, so let's forget, let's.
You did not reject it that night, but that's okay.
I advised Katie of that, so.
Yes, and we were not aware.
Well, that I didn't know, but, and I, but what I proposed was consistent, again, Mr. Fox isn't present unfortunately. Was something consistent with what you and Mr. Fox talked about and I added.
Mr. Fox, yes, and I think, I think you moved.
And also, just to be clear about it, I tried to address Mr. Macleavy's concern about having control over those uses. That perhaps, that, that we're not gonna be able to meet that standard of a hundred and fifty, one space for every hundred and fifty square feet. Now, now, and I, and I added the special permit requirements in the ability for conditions. But let's put that, let's put that aside right now, because I wasn't hired, I wasn't hired by my client to do that. What I came in with, and let's just circle back to the beginning, it's very simple. I came in with a proposed modification to the regulations.
Right.
That dealt with one issue.
Exactly.
That was the ability of physical training whereby there was, whereby there would be one person.
Okay.
Training a number of people and we proposed, and we proposed a regulatory change that limited that number to ten. Okay, the total, the total was ten.
Mr. Tessie, I think you're not hearing what my concern is if you're telling me this. I know what you proposed the last time, I know full well what you brought in the last time. But what I'm saying is, our feedback to you the last time was that that was a very narrow regulation change. Which was destined to correct the fact that someone had an illegal use. So you had taken what that illegal use was and you rewrote the regulation, just a little tweak, so that that illegal use could become conforming. Now, we said, hold on, hold on, hold on, and we said to you, that doesn't really address a broad enough issue. It's a Band-Aid fix of which we have tons in the rags and which gives you rotten regulations. Cause it means there are some that are so egregious and so terrible in our regulations and that's not good, it should be conceptual. Now, so we said that to you, make it broader. I think you've progressed in that direction. But I'm not sure we're there, given what we need to address and that's what I was trying to ask Katie. I get it, I know what you did, I do, we've read it, we all looked at it, Katie.
There were different people, there were different.
There's only Andy's, it's just Andy that's made a suggestion.
I think there were a number of members, I, I think you had a mixed opinion going on among.
You did, and you heard Andy yesterday, he was not in favor, which was really, Andy had a lot of questions yesterday.
And I wish he were here because he got, to me, he got totally off track, but that's my opinion and I.
He'd be just as off track tonight then.
Well, my, my point is, again, I want.
Just let me ask Katie this question, please.
I want to finish, just so you know, there were two other, I received two other contacts from similar businesses. Okay, to my clients, so just so you know, it's been a concern of a number of people, both from a business standpoint of ownership. And from a business standpoint of operation on that type of use, but with that, I, I just wanted to make that.
So, there you go, just, I mean, that, so Katie, that adds to it, I'm not sure, John, Mr. Tessie, that you should have even told, said that part to us. Because our very concern is we have a Band-Aid for one illegal, non, you know, legal use right now. And as soon as we do this, you've already been approached by a bunch of people who want to do gyms of.
I didn't say a bunch of people, I said one owner, I said, I said two people, owner and an operator. And, and, and what, what's frustrating for me is I did an analysis when I provided you with my original letter. That this is in a category of, this is in a category of physical fitness, kind of a deconstructed gym, if you will. Well, and that what is allowed on the second floor. What is allowed is one-on-one trading without any limit on the number of, number of trainers and the number, number of trainees. So the irony is, you could have space, you could, you could have ten personal trainers in ten, in. Ten persons being trained at the same time in that same facility and requiring twenty parking spaces. Yet it's perfectly allowed in the regulations on the second floor.
But that's my exact point, is that I think we're approaching this in a very teeny weeny, narrow way. You just said to me, second floor uses are not clear enough, not good enough. And they're inconsistent with what they're requiring one versus the other and it's too messy. Why are we letting an unlimited amount of trainers? What, what are we doing with the salons? So Katie, that's what I'm struggling with is, I think we're saying the same thing, there is a global question about the second floors. Are we, how do we address it? And I don't think this regulation gets there, and I think it's still moving too much in the direction of a specific applicant that wants their problem fixed, their individual problem. Go ahead, Nick. No, wait, wait, wait. I've been trying to get Katie to answer me like for 15 minutes and nobody's letting her talk. Well, Mr. Tessie wasn't letting her talk. Katie.
I mean, I, like you said, I, I think that this does solve a global problem of the avenue short of just understanding how, how the parking management part of it would be sorted out. Because I, you know, I think the use of it is acceptable and something that we've spoken about, um, still stuffed in it. And something that, that we've spoken about over the years. Um, but what I, you know, I'm just worried about the, how we're going to manage the parking part. I mean, do you know?
Victorious question.
What, what do you think? How is that going to work out? I mean, maybe if, if the commission is serious about, I, I don't feel like this is for one applicant. I don't get that, I don't get that impression. Uh, but I do think that if this proposal is going to work, that it needs to be, you know, much more in-depth analysis than we have at the moment.
Uh, I agree with you, Mrs. Alvin. I think actually the, uh, it, it seems very, very narrow. I, I think actually when we've talked about it through the POCD, that Greenwich Avenue is our prime retail, that traditionally the parking has been a transient in nature. Uh, shoppers come and go. Uh, I think that making or looking at this, it becomes a non-transient situation. And we've heard from, you know, I think most of the property owners on Greenwich Avenue to understand that, you know, they, to, to be successful, need to have that parking on Greenwich Avenue. Uh, and like you said before, we, you know, we're in the middle of this study and you're just kind of putting a Band-Aid on this regulation right now. They have effects on, uh, the study that we're doing. And then how do we claw this back if we know we're not, it's not working? Um, I think this is the issue that we were talking about yesterday about the success. Yes, you want to have success on Greenwich Avenue. But if it becomes a situation where yes, this is successful, then the next person does the next person. The next thing we know, the retail will die because we have all these, you know, uses on the second floor. Because the retail just can't, you know, they, the people don't come to Greenwich Avenue anymore. And it, it, it doesn't, you know, the uses up there, you know, it doesn't really matter. It's all about how it relates to what's happening on the street. And you want people in foot traffic on the street and people who can come and go uh, to use the goods and services that are there as the retail on the first floor. That's what it's all focused at. And it's been like that for years and years. I think this is kind of narrowly defining one specific little thing where it's got to be actually a, a, a larger look at. And it's got to be understood. It's actually the whole half mile of Greenwich Avenue, top to bottom. I think actually if we're looking at one floor of one building, you know, we really have to stake the, the global scale of it's every floor of every building.
Can, can we, um, they say that hard cases make bad law. And this may be one of, an example of that, because it's a difficult case, because we are empathetic to the property owner. But yet it would make, there's a feeling that it could make bad law for the town. But is there, Katie, whoops, is, we had declared a moratorium on enforcement of a, of a P and Z regulation. There's no way we can declare a moratorium on, on, um, enforcement and let this, let this property owner continue their use until we get our traffic study done.
We're not allowed to break our own regulations, Victoria.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying break our regulations. I'm saying, is there a workaround here without breaking our regulation?
To continue an illegal use by suspending the regulation?
With, with this commission has, with the commission.
But no, there could be some other way to do it. I'm not saying, I'm not saying violate our own.
Katie, are you hearing the question?
I, I can, I can, I can answer that, because.
Well, I know, but I, I'm sorry, Mr. Tessie, I'm sorry, but you keep cutting me off and she is our staff.
I'm not cutting off, I'm just going to make.
I'm trying to ask Katie, Victoria asked a question and I asked Katie first. Mr. Tessie, you've got to let, when we ask staff for comment. Katie, Victoria wanted to know, and we're going to let Mr. Tessie ask it, answer as well. If there was a workaround that this person, by the way, you're still muted, if there was a workaround, um, we have a regulation that's been violated, and if there was a workaround that would allow us to, to continue the use with a moratorium or something.
Until we get.
Well, sorry?
Until we get the parking study done that we, we, we have in.
I know, but I answered it.
I mean, theoretically, you could argue, I suppose, that if the applicant is making an effort to solve the zoning violation, that you could allow them to stay in there as long as they're actively studying it, submitting applications, et cetera, theoretically. I mean, you obviously don't want to, you don't want people to just start, you know, it has to be a good faith effort to do that, of course.
But you can't suspend our regulation.
No, no, you couldn't, you couldn't, you can't do a moratorium. You can't do something like, you can't suspend it. No, you can't do that.
Okay. Mr. Tessie, please go ahead and answer the question now.
Uh, Katie actually answered it. The answer is that what this commission has historically done, um, when there's a situation similar to this, is that if an applicant is, can you use phrase, making good faith effort, but making an application in good faith, and I believe you, hopefully you at least believe the application was made in good faith. Um, and the application is pending, um, then it, the matter is not closed yet. And in fact, what I'm really hearing is you don't want to rule on this app, you're not prepared to rule on the application and may or may not turn to be, turn out to be a very good application. But you don't know that yet and you want to, you want to study it more.
But the problem is that you're a must, you're a must close on the 15th of October, which means we have to close this by next week, 15th of August.
I can give you, I haven't given you any extensions yet.
No, it says maximum extension to a close has been applied.
This new application, well, first of all, it's a little weird because I filed a second app. The, you take it straight, I filed the original application. I was asked to come up with, with another, I believe I was asked to come up with another concept, the one we were going back and forth on. A more global application. That, that second application, or this, this, call it a second application, in a way. This proposal I just made could never be approved under the original application because it's an expansion. So my thought process was that if you were feeling that was going in the right direction, if you will, or possibly, they would have to morph into an actual application for a text change.
Okay.
And now it was, it was responsive. So I would make it a formal application.
Okay, so.
And you'll have all the time in the world.
I'm, I'm not understanding, Mr. Tessie, because this has been always a text amendment from the get-go. So there was a proposal in the beginning of the year, and then you revised it a few weeks ago and we, we noticed it.
I substantially expanded it.
But, but we noticed it with time, you know, we, we, we sent it to Westco. I mean, we, we, we did all the due diligence to, to have the amendment. So I, I'm not, I'm not quite following where the re-application was made or the, but I, I don't see it as being a substantial expansion since we have re-noticed the, the application based on the comments from the commission last meeting.
The, I know that you sent it out. I didn't know you, what you were going to do with it, because it was a proposal. But if, if it's a matter of time, with respect to this particular element of it, the more universal element of it, then I could help my clients out. I can withdraw this application.
And start over.
And I could resubmit it on the basis that you, you really do, what you're really saying is you don't know what to do with it. As you pointed out, you have a study going on in the commercial zones. So.
Oh, I mean, I can tell you, I just, as Katie said, I, and as Nick said, from both points of view, and Victoria really said the same thing, it's still narrow. It doesn't have data behind it. We don't know what the impact is going to be. We'd like to be helpful, but we don't want to do patchwork zoning. So we're stuck, because we do want to be helpful, but it doesn't work for us yet. It's getting there, but we don't have data. We don't know how it's going to work. We don't have an underlying traffic, underlying parking study, all that kind of stuff. What are we going to do to the avenue? And the thing I said to you the last meeting is, I've got, I can tell you the retailers that have found us and reached out and complained that with the nodes on the avenue, there's not enough parking and they're going crazy. And I'm really anxious about that because I'm not sure what's happening. And we're going to keep the avenue open. You saw the Board of Selectmen voted to keep the avenue with, you know, limited parking like this through into December. Um, now we decide on the dining, but we're not going to go as far with the dining, or that's the plan right now. But so we're balancing this equation and I don't think we're there yet, Mr. Tessie. I, I mean, I really struggled with this over the weekend. I, I don't know what.
Aren't we kicking the can down the road?
We are.
And, and number two, uh, when do we think this said, uh, parking study is going to be completed?
It's mostly done. It's the work that Francisco did. We, Katie, how close to done is he?
I mean, it's, it's in our court at this point. So he's, he's done. We'd have to kind of restart that.
You guys, if you guys are willing to meet on it in August, I know Dennis is going to be away. Um, but if, um, if everybody's willing to meet on it and get it done, we, we could start at least talking about how to change regulations in the month of August. Um, Katie? I mean, we've got a bunch of stuff, other stuff.
It's a lot of work, um, just because it impacts, um, many sections of the regulations and it's a huge overhaul. So it's, it's a ton of work, very, very time consuming.
I think we should, we should just, we should get into it or, and basically just kind of get together, you know, the outline of the, what we need to do, the next steps and get that going. But I think getting, getting back to this text amendment, you know, I, I don't, I don't see anything that can, any new additional information or, or, you know, adding, shedding new light on this. It, to me, it's so narrow. Um, you know, what did, what did you say, uh, Mrs. Ms. Goss about the bad law, that kind of thing? I, I, I'm not too sure where.
Hard cases make bad law, that you're trying to help someone out and you end up writing a bad law as a result. I mean, it's a great, it's a great line. I'd never heard it before.
Right. I, I'm not too sure what Mr. Tessie would like to do, but.
Um, can I, Mr. Yolen is dying to, I'm sorry, Mr. MacRae, to interrupt you, but Mr. Tessie, um, Mr. Yolen would like to speak.
So, uh, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much for, um, taking this up. I appreciate.
Yeah, we fell asleep and we woke up again.
Um, would you like video is, or you don't?
If you'd like, it doesn't matter. If, if we got you out of bed, you know. Okay, that's fine. Don't turn it on. We don't want to invade your pride of privacy. Go ahead.
Thank you.
So I, I, I do appreciate your concerns and it seems like you really do want to help us out. Um, we would be willing to work with you for the timeframe of, until the, the parking study is completed. Um, I know that Mr. Tessie has put together a proposal that included, um, limited hours for the, for the, um, bar studio so that they, the parking.
Early in the morning.
Right, and later at night.
The problem, I'm sorry, so I saw that just to let you know, uh, we can't answer those things when they come through. But you see, that would be the problem because, so we would limit you, but that's not really the issue. The issue is, do we limit everybody? Um, what do we do with the two people that want to do just what you're doing? And so, um, so somebody gets some hours and, and what if it's not quite a bar studio? What if it's something else? And do we limit office hours? That's the problem. So you're willing to do something, but we've got to do something that, we've got to do it so it works for everybody. And that's why we're so stuck and we don't want to mess up the avenue because it's really tough right now.
Yeah, it's terrible. We're going to be losing our downstairs tenant too. And it's not because of the parking. It's just nobody's on the avenue. There's everything for sale, everything for rent, and everybody is, is sucking wind and nobody can find tenants. And also because everything's online, but it's not the parking so much as that people are not walking down the street. If there's nobody there, if there's nobody to shop. So, um.
And we're getting complaints on the other side that because we have the outdoor dining and all the nodes are taking up the parking space, the retailers are saying they're being hurt. So.
Well, I understand that because, you know, they think that. But the truth is, the more people you have there, the more opportunity you have for shoppers. But that being said, look, when, when, when this studio went in, I had called and written letters to, and Bianca Zygar, whoever that was, said that it was okay to do like a one-on-one type training with a few people at a time. And what I thought, what went in there was exactly what she said was allowable. I didn't do anything against the law or trying to, you know, trick people or trying to have a class group. I called her, I wrote her, there were letters going back and forth. And I said, are you positive that this would work? And she assured me that because it was this small group, one-on-one or one-on-three type thing, or whatever it was, that was allowable, or else I would have never put that in, although I hadn't been able to rent it in, in quite some time. That being said, I can't go back and change things. But what I'd like to do is just ask you if while you're deciding what the future of the second floor will be, and I'm not talking about office, I'm talking about this particular person who has these women that come and shop and go to coffee and buy things on the avenue. If you could allow her to continue until we figure out what you want to do, just because how can I put her out of business and tell her she has to leave when, when she's put in so much time and effort? And I feel like it's my fault as well for misunderstanding your regulation.
I got, I get, we get all that and we want to help you. And then what Katie just said to us is, as long as you're making a best, a good faith effort to remediate the situation, we can let you keep operating until we decide it. But as Mr. Lowe pointed out, we're kicking the can down the road because we're not comfortable at this point still with what's being proposed. And I don't know how to help you because we can't break our own regulations. It's the number one thing.
Given, given the depressive business environment on Greenwich Avenue, um, could we seek some sort of temporary suspension of?
No.
Some of the parking regs, similar to what the Board of Selectmen did with dining and, and et cetera?
We have already. That's why we don't have enough parking. We've suspended the parking regulations on the avenue in order to accommodate outdoor commerce. That's all the executive orders let us do, to accommodate outdoor commerce, not to accommodate uses that are not permitted without having parking. So the executive orders just helped us. They wanted to have the bar class outside. We'd be all set.
Well.
Uh, look, I think.
If you go there in the morning, there's nobody parking there. I mean, I, can I invite you guys?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Mrs. Yolen, but the problem is, I get it for your building. But what you guys are now proposing, what you are, you have to propose is something that works down the whole length of the avenue. And how do I make sure that none of those people are showing up at a bad time for the retailers? That's the problem. I mean, Mr. Tessie understands that the fact that we can't just do it for you, we have to do it for everybody. And that's the issue.
Just realized something. I, I submitted, I, I, I've submitted a couple of articles to, I don't know if they made their way to the commission members or not, but a few articles, uh, to, to staff on the very subject of the impact of, and I think, I brought this up last time, but the impact of these gyms, some call it deconstructed gyms, when they're broken into component parts, on retail uses. And I think I even mentioned to you, is it actually a lawsuit by, by a group of retailers in a shopping, shopping mall, shopping center, uh, when a gym came in suing against the landlord for bringing them in because they brought in so many people to take up so many spaces. They ultimately had to withdraw the case because they couldn't prove the case because all their businesses actually increased. And those aren't the only ones. What I'm going to do is in good faith, I am going to address this issue with subsequent application when I've done all my research.
Okay.
That will fold into, I think, and help you make your decision.
That sounds great.
As Katie pointed out, and you have our word, my word to my clients, we're, we're going to act in good faith. We heard that you're concerned about parking. You like to see studies, like to see articles, et cetera.
Perfect.
We're going to expand that and we're going to provide that to you in the coming months. So you can rest in August and, uh, we'll, we'll get there. And I think.
No, no, don't, don't, I, I don't want to rest for that. If you're going to send us articles, just ask. I'd love to read the stuff that you've got because I'd love to read anything you've got that'll help us. And Mrs. Yolen, Mr. Yolen, there's one thing I wanted to ask you.
Yes.
I, uh, so one of the solutions that is possible in the interim for you is a lot of people are doing virtual bar. And they still have a studio, but they have, I had two people, three people actually there. And everybody else is virtual and it's working fine. You would still have a tenant and you just wouldn't be in violation of the regs. If you had, you just reduced who is, right now, that's another solution for you until we're done with COVID. And I don't think we're done with COVID anytime soon right now.
She is doing that now, actually. She.
So you don't really have 10 people there right now.
We never really have 10. That was like the outside amount. It's usually four or six.
Now it's one or two.
Now it's one or two. It's been one or two for the last three months.
Katie, can we work with that?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, if it's one, if it's one, it's perfectly legal.
Exactly.
But, but it's been two all through COVID at tops and basically.
Well, during COVID, no, during COVID, you couldn't have, oh my gosh, don't even tell me that.
No, she wasn't open.
No, she wasn't open. She just opened like.
Okay. So that's what most people are having. Um, is there's nobody live. Nobody wants to go take a live indoor exercise class right now. So the easiest thing would be keep your tenant, let them have their, their instructor there. And ask them to, I don't know, can they limit to one?
Well, that, that's all they have right now when they're, they're filming the classes. And to be honest with you, we've reduced the rent to like nothing and for all our tenants. And we're, we're sucking wind on our property totally.
So nobody's going to be doing live classes for a while, Mr. Tessie. That's what I'm seeing. Because when they panned, I'm just telling you, I didn't mean to make it this personal, but nobody's doing them anyway. You don't need 10 people. You don't need permission to do 10 people. You'd be fine with one.
I, I think this week she had two.
I think that the bottom line point is that, that in terms of this issue of the second floor.
Got November.
And these type of u- uses. I am going to pr- provide you with data and work in good faith to provide you with further data on that subject of impact on the retail neighbors. And again, let's bear in mind in these type of uses, as you all know, Jim, and you know it very well, the concentrated times actually, for the most part, I, let's not lose sight of this. I compliment retail because they're usually done in the morning up to about 10 o'clock and later in the afternoon. The conditions that we proposed are special permit type of conditions that as you know, you put, you do put in all these physical training uses anyway. But so I, I think we can come up with a complimentary proposal backed, backed upon more empirical data. But that idea that nature of that type of use concentrates on the periphery of the retail use should in fact warrant a, a proper look with a bit more information or maybe a lot more information on how they complement.
Okay.
Katie? I think it'd be really helpful just because we've done this three or, uh, at least three times where we've gotten all the, um, property owners and business owners together. Uh, Mr. Tessie, you've been on, been in on those meetings or at least some of your, um, clients have from time to time. And we always hear the same thing about the segregation of shoppers and employees. And now with Chief Marino getting so involved, I think it would be very, very helpful to get that group together and just, um, here, I have to say, because I think they're in favor of this use. I hear it all the time from brokers that there's a lot of desire for this type of use. But we have to figure out together as a, as a community, if you will, um, how it's going to actually work.
Yeah, I, I, I think having workshops and having these conferences and, and, and all these studies and input is, is invaluable. And there are different opinions, but at the end of the day, everyone is, has the same goal to make.
To make the avenue work.
Vibrant and growing and not aggressive. We're all, we're all working together here to do that.
Yeah. And it's just, and to not, and okay, so I think we've got a plan. You're going to send us lots of information, help us inform our thinking. We're going to try to move forward our commercial, um, is our commercial zone study. And the Yolans are going to try and figure out how does, if they can get it so that it is compliant because if.
Well, so long as we're acting in good faith, as Katie pointed out, the historical perspective, even some people who weren't act, acting in good faith over a number of years, quite frankly, have been left alone. We are acting in good faith. You heard from my clients. Uh, there was a misunderstanding, but it was all done. And they are, as you see, they are in a tough situation, as they said earlier. As are a number of other small owner, you know, you know, owners of single buildings that are important for the family's basic income, basic income each year. So.
Victoria, did you want to add something?
I'd like to follow up with Katie and Patrick on, on getting together with the groups and, and sharing information and working together. So.
Uh, Victoria wants to add something, Mr. Tessie.
Uh, I think Mr. Tessie's on a good track now, but, and I did think the, the, what I was thinking before, I mean, this is the, just thinking outside the box a little bit. But on six, one, 10G, when we declared a moratorium, we didn't declare a moratorium on the enforcement, which would be violating our own regs. What we did do was declare a moratorium on six, one, 10G. So we declared a moratorium on the reg, regulation, not the enforcement of it. We could conceivably declare a moratorium on the regulation that says that the, the second floor uses have to have a certain amount of parking. We could declare a moratorium on that regulation.
No, we can't.
We, that's not violating our regulations.
It is because we're suspending a regulation in response to a violation. We're fixing a violation by suspending our own rules. We can't.
Not, not if we're.
Can't do it. Victoria, Victoria, Katie gave you the same answer. We just can't do it. They're all shaking their heads. Not done.
I think Mr. Tessie would understand, but.
Oh, I'm sure he would love it, but we would all be.
No, I, I, I appreciate what, what you're saying.
Okay.
Everybody's sympathy to this situation. As I said, I think it's important for my client and, and, and that's why I'm here. Um, but it's also important to get things, get, get things right and all work together in good faith. And as long as we're doing that, as Katie noted, zoning enforcement and the zoning coordinator, Katie, then do not enforce the regulation unless something crazy was going on. And, uh, and so we are going to do that. I just said earlier, I pledged to do it. And my client wants to get it right. They don't want to be considered a violator. They made it quite clear to me that, that their goal is to work to get, set things right. They got off to a misunderstanding, uh, with staff, which I could see how that would happen because it's a very, it's a nuance of a regulations in certain respect. Anyway, I know it's late.
No, no, that's fine because this was important.
Everything out and I think.
I'm sorry. I was trying to rush Mr. Cohen a little bit because his, he, his presentation had gotten drawn out. And I knew we wanted to talk about this issue in depth. So when we got to you, we, we had the bandwidth for you. Um, and sometimes we get into a little much detail on other stuff, as you know. It's our fault too. We all get drawn out. So, um, you've got, and Katie, any comments? Because I know there's a little concern that we're, we're adding to your workload.
Well, I don't think we can, we can, you know, take on the whole commercial zone project. We, whether we did, but I do certainly think there's a lot of opportunity here to just deal with this one narrow piece of it. I mean, the way the, the way the proposal, um, has come in, it makes sense to me mathematically, meaning that retail versus office, you know, you back the numbers in either way and it's, it's a wash. So I'm, I'm, that part's fine. But what that might mean for the future is what, what we need to get a handle on. And I, and I think this is a very good path, um, to just get the data to support. I mean, it's kind of like what we did with the, with the liquor regs when we, when, when you guys released those. It's like, it sounds like a good idea, but let's just make sure we've got the data to support.
And we did it piecemeal. Um, so, and Mrs. Yolen, the other thing is in the interim, I think you're going to be okay because you're probably going to have one student. You know that the outbreak, that you know that the numbers are on the increase again with the COVID infections thanks to those parties. And you're going to see that everybody's going to back right off of the high exposure things. You've, you've got the time right now because if somebody went to inspect you, you would not be in violation. That's my guess of what's going to happen anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you can kind of ask Ms. Cindy Sykes to be thinking about that? Because she's not going to mind being virtual and just try to, try to keep it at a minimum so that there really is. That's going to buy us some time. And, um, this thing with the, the kids and the party is bad. I, I, um, during the break, I got some messages that, um, we've got some more facilities that have closed. Just in town that they had to close stuff. So, um, okay.
She was in, she was in West Virginia and she's in a no zone, so she couldn't be here and she apologized.
I know, no, no problem. I'm glad she's being careful. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, right now, you're going to be virtual anyway. I think it's about, it's, you know, so I wouldn't, right now, it's not a pressing concern. You're not going to have 10 people in that room.
No, and we're not even charging rent to.
Yeah, I got, I mean, I, I know. And thank you for that because I know some, by the way, some landlords are, and we've, we've heard about that. Okey doke. So we'll talk soon. Um, send all the articles you want, Mr. Tessie. Just tell staff that we're dying to read stuff.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you working with us.
Am I leaving?
On the technical front, Katie.
You're going to withdraw this or leave it open?
Well, I think we leave it open. You have to decide it by, on this fourth meeting.
Just leave it open for, well, oh, oh, I'm sorry. We'd have to decide it by August fourth?
Yes, because it's a must close on the 15th. So.
Sense. I should, I think you should just withdraw it and we should.
Withdraw it.
Yeah, and.
Without prejudice, so to speak.
So did, yeah. Well, little prejudice, just a little, little teeny weeny amount of prejudice for not letting Katie talk when we're asking her questions.
No, I was just trying to make, I was trying to give her more information so she'd have a more, be more capable of having an informed response.
Mr. Tessie, you're, you're, Mr. Tessie, you're familiar about being in a hole, right?
All right, we're going to let Katie go.
Sometimes, Mr. Lowe, I think I see China.
Well, at least you're not seeing Russia from, what is it? Siberia from your back porch? Okay, um, so with that, we're going to end the meeting and thank you, Yolans, for getting up. We're hoping to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. I did, did, did we do the high school?
No, we're gonna, I'm so, we're just closing the public hearing and now we got to do the decision.
The meeting, I said, well, hold on.
No, no, I meant the public hearing. So now we're going to do the high school real fast. And, um, the MI very specifically is only for 1A. Correct, Katie? The MI is very specifically for 1A only, and we're going to do the MI first and then the site plan.
All right, that's, oh, good.
That's okay. We know she's there, Katie. You don't need to worry. We see Kai Kai every now and then.
Yeah, I realized there was no opportunity to actually put her to bed. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Believe me, new, new, new blood would be welcome.
Yeah, she won't go.
Listening to this isn't helping, Katie?
No, it only helps the grownups get tired. Okey doke, guys. So that's.
Katie, I carried my daughter to RTM meetings when she was two. And she'd sit through the RTM meetings at, at our district meetings at Town Hall.
Scarred forever. Okay, you guys, you want to make some decisions so we can go to bed?
Please.
Um, should I turn off the recording, Pat?
Uh, no, let's leave it all on.
Okay. Alrighty.
Starting with the MI?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, here we go. Uh, 10 Hillside Road.
Mr. McRae is now making a motion on the MI for the high school. Go ahead.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, but I just have to make sure I identify you.
Uh, 10 Hillside Road municipal improvement. Uh, whereas the applicant seeks municipal improvement status to construct Phase 1A, uh, which would comprise construction of the bleachers, press box, team building, and limited site improvements at the back of the bleacher area. New home team bleachers, uh, bleachers, uh, press box improvements to handicap accessibility and parking, public restrooms, team rooms, concession area, and update the field lighting in compliance with the court order. Uh, the commission finds that a meeting held on April 23rd, 2020, the Board of Select unanimously voted to approve the referral of at the MI to P and Z in accordance with section, uh, 99A2 of the Town Charter. And as indicated in a 2019 Plan of Conservation Development, the proposal is consistent with Guiding Principle Number Three, provide top-quality educational facilities. And Guiding Principle Number Six, provide the best quality infrastructure, municipal facility, cultural institutions, and health services. Therefore, uh, motion to grant municipal improvement status in accordance with section 99A2 of the Town of Charter.
Do I have a second for Mr. McRae's motion?
And I'm sorry, and just because you, Mr. McRae, you kind of described, I think, uh, most of the project there. So as Ms. Albin has said before, you're limiting it to just the 1A phase, right?
Yes, 1A phase, which is the, the bleachers, press box, the team room down below, uh, site improvements to the, behind the bleachers, uh, the concession area, and an update to the field lighting in compliance with the court order.
Okey doke. Do I have a second to Mr. McRae's motion? Mr. Hardman has seconded. Um, if we could have the, oh, I'm on the wrong page. Sorry. If, um, I'm going to once again do the votes, um, Mr. Levy? Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
And Mr. McRae?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Um, that is five to nothing. And we go on to the site plan. Mr. McRae, could I have a motion for the site plan?
10 Hillside Road Site Plan Special Permit, PLPC 2020, uh, 105. Whereas the applicant seeks site plan special permit to construct new home team bleachers, press box, improvements to handicap accessibility, uh, and parking, public restrooms, team rooms, and concession area, and update the field lighting in compliance with the court order. The applicant has been granted MI status under section 699A2 of the Town Charter. Uh, portion of the property is, oh, no, take that one out. Um, the applicant has divided, uh, the proposed phase stadium project into three phases. 1A, 1B, and 2. Phase 1A would comprise construction of the bleachers, press box, et cetera. Um, and limited site improvements. Phase 1B would be construct, construction of the accessible parking area, ticket kiosk, and update field lighting. Um, at the 63020 public hearing, um, addresses only, uh, at the 728 public hearing. Uh, this will only address the Phase 1A scope as outlined in pages 12, 13, and 14 of the applicant's presentation slides. The site is subject to a stipulated settlement dated 7/22/03, referencing Final Site Plan 2278 dated 06/28/02. Uh, the commission, commission finds that the ARC issued stated, uh, 5/18/20, uh, dating that, stating that it does not return for structure of stands, uh, return for the ticket booth and details. Designers were given a 2K, uh, for the applicant to address while, uh, when returning for further review. Uh, zoning on, uh, uh, June 10th, 2020, the ZBA granted a variance of allowable height for the proposed bleacher stair tower. And on 7/22/20, granted a variance of floor area. EPW, uh, the applicant has submitted a drainage disempion application dated, uh, June 12th, 20, covering only Phase 1 of the project. Sewer Division, uh, an email memo, uh, issued 6, uh, 1620, um, with continuing concerns about the structure directly above the high school sewer lateral. The memo continued, quote, "That being, that being said, we understand their desire to construct their stadium seating, et cetera. If P and Z wants to approve the project, it's Sewer Division will not prevent that from happening. We just want to, uh, everyone to be aware of the situation that was being proposed and if that's something that Sewer Division would recommend." Therefore, uh, motion to approve Phase 1A portion of the application for site plan special permit with the following conditions. Uh, the applicant should return with Phase 1B as soon as possible. The applicant to continue to work with DPW Engineering and Sewer Division to address all outstanding concerns. And the applicant shall adhere to all conditions listed in previous site plan approvals, specifically those enumerated in Final Site Plan Special Permit applications uh, to PLPC 2010 408 and PLPC, uh, 2010 409, dated, uh, 12/28, uh, 10, 10, for the Mesa Project. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer into departmental issues.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Thank you.
Um, who is that? I'm sorry. Mr. Levy seconded the motion. Um, I'll take the votes. Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr., uh, Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. That's five, nothing. We have one more. And Albin is also I. That's five, nothing. We have one more. To do, which is the tennis facility at Greenwich Country Club. Uh, if I could have a motion, Mr. MacRae.
Okay, uh. Greenwich Country Club Final Site Plan Special Permit, PLPC 2020, 181. Uh, whereas the applicant is seeking final site plan and special permit to construct renovations to the club to do some tennis pro shop building. Including construction of a new attached covered patio. Construction of a new storage shed and renovation to the club's outdoor patio and associated site infrastructure. Drainage improvements at 104, 140 acre property on 19 Dublin Road in the RA1 zone. The commission finds that, uh, conservation is issue comments on 7/22/20. Recommending at least 25% of the proposed planting material be native species and herb and pollinator friendly. Zoning issue comments, uh, dated 7/21/20 indicating the proposal looks, is acceptable for zoning permit. Sign off. Uh, DPW issue comment stated 7/21/20. Indicating all outstanding issues can be addressed during the zoning building permit phase. Uh, sewer division issue comments on 7/21 indicating no issues to be addressed during P and Z phase. Um, ARC issue comments on 7/15/20. From their meeting that with a decision to return electronically to refine the details of the columns, cupola and walls. Therefore, motion to approve the application for site, final site plan and special permit with the following conditions. The applicant shall abide by any and all previous, uh, planning and zoning commission or zoning board of appeals approvals and conditions. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer into departmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, I think Hardman was first because he raised his hand. He's muted. Mr. Hardman has seconded that motion. And I keep having to look at who's seated on everything. Sorry. Okey dokey. So seated on this is, um, Mr. Hardman. Uh, you vote. I think that was an I. I didn't hear you for some reason. Oh, I guess it doesn't say you're muted, but I'm not hearing you. But okay. Uh, Mr. Hardman has voted I. Uh, Mr. Lowe.
Aye.
Mr. Levy.
Aye.
Mr. MacRae.
Aye.
And I'm an I and that's five, nothing. And we are finally done.
Uh, so we're going to skip the subdivision.
We have to skip it because the applicant didn't show up, so we had to leave it open.
Yeah, and we found there was, um, an easement, they were getting some easements sorted out and so they had not communicated. They wanted to postpone. So apologies.
Oh, that was the whole, that was the engineering issues of, uh, the sewer division and all that stuff. Okay, thank you.
Approve a five square foot.
11.
No, we'll just approve a five square foot tonight.
Yeah.
Oh, so you get perverse after 11 o'clock. I didn't know that. I was perverse a whole bunch earlier tonight.
He's, he's, he's on the midnight watch now.
If we, if we had been, um, all together in town hall during our regular session, it would be 1:15 in the morning.
Right.
For the third meeting era.
Yeah. So again, uh.
As I say, just saying.
No, so the lessons learned tonight is. Mr. Cohen could do a lot less detail in his presentations and we need to give him that feedback. We need to let him assume. Ask him to assume that the commission has read his submission. And to let us ask questions upfront instead of having him trot out eight people.
Yeah, but his, his client needs to know that he's done his homework.
Yeah, maybe, but he is the longest presenter of any application we ever get. The other thing is of course.
Sorry, I was going to say we give very lengthy narratives from him, which are extremely comprehensive to, so clients should know that.
We don't need it.
Very in depth.
It's overkill and when we've given him the feedback, he's resisted, but I hope we can give him the, um, feedback again. The other thing is of course, we all have to stay out of the rabbit hole and I, I'm sure I was guilty. Um, we just have to be careful. When we just drill down into something that we don't need to do. Okay. I mean, I'm sure I did it. I'm not blaming any of us, but it's the only way to keep moving. I thought the public was really good tonight. They were pretty cool. They didn't. They didn't belabor stuff.
Yeah, that were, and that's true. They were good.
I mean, when they started talking, everybody's like, oh, let's get them to stop. But the truth was they were better than we were. I'm sure I'm guilty, so I'm not.
I think I do some of my best work when we're down in the rabbit hole.
It may be Nick, but we're hating every moment of it.
And like Mr. Lowe said, you know, it's one o'clock. It's time for the second pet. Let's hit the stage.
So, um, so where are we going drinking again?
Back up.
Virtual drinks.
Virtual drinks, everybody.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. I hope Kai Kai goes to bed soon.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Night. I turned off the recording, Pat.
I hope it was on. I, I just, it, it said recording the whole time, so I, I.
But all of a sudden, when I texted you, I looked down and it's, and it's like, recording is paused. And I'm like, oh my God.
See, it doesn't say recording, it says paused or recording. It doesn't say both. So for me.
No, it said paused. It said, you know, it was turned off. It wasn't, you know, the little thing that's up there that's, it's on.
I mean, I, I hope, I hope there wasn't some miss.
Doesn't matter because GCTV was here the whole night. So worst case, you have something.
Yeah, well, I think, I think it only really matters with the transcribing. I don't know if it actually stops the video, but, um, whatever. I mean. You can't let people run the show, right? If, if robots are better, right?
Yes.
So why was GCTV here?
Good. They still come.
Oh, they, okay.
They, they actually broadcast our Zoom meetings.
Oh, okay.
For those of us pay for cable still.
Okay, guys, we're over and out. I'm ready for, I'm ready for dinner in the worst way. Okay, bye, everybody.
Good night.